Good evening. This is the July 20th, 2017 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission being held in Town Council chambers. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
Stood by the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Commission members, please introduce yourselves, starting on my right. Jonathan Formkella, alternate.
Kathy Lindstrom, alternate.
Leanne Ambrose, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman.
Walisi, commissioner.
Mike O'Reilly, secretary.
Will Restadler. Scott Schott, senior director.
Rebecca Wood, reporting as secretary.
All right, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission in an issue that's not related to a public hearing or any item on the agenda? Seeing none, general appointments, we have none. We will move on to public hearings. Okay. Instructions to the audience for public hearings. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and to speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the applications and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comment shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. The commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same of what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please use the room or please leave the room and use them outside. Switch to stick. I've got the public numbers. Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing will be held June 22nd, 2017. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, on Thursday, June 22nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, concerning the following. S U B 2017-01, file number 1261C, 36 Timothy Hill Road, Section 6, Pepper Street Business Park, application for re-subdivision from New England Materials LLC, John Kimball, to create four industrial building lots, access via a new dedicated public road connection. Complete details and copies of all related material associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. Will, exhibit we have for exhibits?
Exhibit 1, subdivision, re-subdivision application, project narrative. Exhibit 2, boroughs list. Exhibit 3, bond estimate form. Exhibit 4, engineering report from the applicant. Exhibit 5, 24 page plan set by the applicant. Exhibit 6, adjacent municipality referral notices. Exhibit 7, town planner comments. Exhibit 8, building official comments. Exhibit 9, health department comments. Exhibit 10, response to comments by applicant. Exhibit 11, lot 29, build area sketch by the applicant. Exhibit 12, engineering report by the applicant. Exhibit 13, advised plan set by the applicant. Exhibit 14, fire marshal comments. Exhibit 15, updated town planner comments. Exhibit 16, town engineer comments. Exhibit 17, bond estimate form updated. Exhibit 18, conservation and water resources commission comments. Exhibit 19, letter postponing public hearing from the applicant. Exhibit 20, notification to find public health and according work company certified receipt to green card. Exhibit 21, letter postponing public hearing by applicant. Exhibit 22, response to comments. Exhibit 23, subdivision application and attachment materials for commission. Exhibit 24, updated engineering report. Exhibit 25, updated plan, project plans. Exhibit 26, updated town planner comments. Exhibit 27, updated town engineer comments. Exhibit 28, conservation and water resources commission comment writer. And exhibit 29 would be the public hearing notice certificate and green card. That is all.
And for the applicant?
Good evening, members of the commission. First, I want to apologize for the raspiness of my voice. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices located here at 501 Main Street in Monroe. So this application is actually one that's been before the commission, or the property itself has been before the commission several times. We are still going through the wetlands process. Our next hearing is next Wednesday, so we're not expecting to close the hearing, so I'm going to keep the presentation relatively brief. I want to provide an overall overview. We did get some, you know, there probably are a few comments that I'd like to address with the commission, but I might really want to kind of run through where we are and give you guys some history and some background and then kind of see how the commission would like to handle it, knowing that we're going to be left open. So, we're going to talk about the Section 6 of the Pepper Street Business Park? So just to orient everybody, the subject site is located along the northwesterly portion of the town of Monroe. You can see here on this aerial, this depicts the town of Monroe. The Pepper Street Business Park is located in this location here, just south of the town line at Newtown. Route 25 runs north-south in this direction here, and the site's accessed off of Pepper Street. This just provides a little bit closer detail. You can see Route 25 through here. You've got, Pepper Street is a loop with its southerly loop intersecting just south of the intersection with 59 as it goes towards eastern. The northerly end of Pepper Street is located here, opposite Corporate Drive, where I believe there's another application on this evening. The park itself is accessed off of Pepper Street via Cambridge Drive. The site's been, or the overall Pepper Street Business Park has been subject to a number of approvals since 2002. The park itself was developed over six sections or six phases, the first of which coming in off of Cambridge Drive. Enterprise Drive continues this way, runs north-south. Independence Drive runs east-west off of Enterprise Drive, and this represents the overall park itself, how it was, how it's been designed and approved over the, over the many years. And the site that we're talking about is 36 Timothy Hill Road. Now, this site was recently approved for a five-lot industrial subdivision. And, just to orient a little bit more, so here's 36 Timothy Hill Road. There are some wetlands on the property, which we're currently going through. This aerial represents what was previously approved by this commission for a five-lot industrial subdivision. You can see Independence Drive is going to be continued and connected into Timothy Hill Road, and as part of the previous approvals, Timothy Hill Road was actually going to be renamed Independence. So Independence Drive is going to connect Enterprise Drive through 36 Timothy Hill and connect up to Fan Hill Road in this location here. So this represents the previously approved subdivision. Now, the reason for the application this evening is actually, there's been interest in this portion of the business park by specific business operations, who would, which, in order to accommodate their uses, it required us to modify the subdivision to ensure that we could provide adequate room to accommodate their uses. So, this is what we're currently proposing. You can see, what we're doing is we're shifting Independence Drive a little bit further south, creating a larger lot in this location here, and it'll be four lots, 1, 2, 3, 4 lots compared to the previously approved 5. And here's the, just a quick rendering of the proposed roadway. So, this plan on the screen now shows the changes. The, shown in black is the previously approved subdivision road. You can see it traverse through the area, the site, in this, in this location here. We're currently proposing to modify that, shift the road down approximately 70 feet in this location, and continue it across 36 Timothy Hill, which really maximizes the development potential for, for this parcel, and I will get into potential development plans, which is included in your application, to kind of, to allow you to see the impetus of the change and what's kind of coming down the pipe. So, so this overall shows the layout of our proposed subdivision road as, as modified. The road does include two concrete precast bridge structure crossings over existing wetland corridors. This is consistent with what was approved as part of the previous, previously approved subdivision. They are designed to, they are designed to represent full span over those wetlands, so there is no direct permanent wetland impact as part of this, this project and this construction. This plan shows the grading, the, our overall design intent is very consistent with what was previously approved by this commission. So we've incorporated a lot of the same requirements that were previously reviewed and approved multiple times and incorporated into our design here. So, from a stormwater standpoint, the site's been designed to provide water quality through three water quality basins, two to the north of the proposed subdivision road, and one to the south. You can see here, here the two proposed crossings of the wetlands, and actually by allowing, by, as part of shifting this road down, it actually allowed us to cross in a little bit narrower spots than where they were previously. The members who were part of the previous applications, you may, you may remember that we actually had a, an angled box culver, and then another larger bridge to make the crossings, and how we were able to lay this road out, we were able to consolidate or really be as efficient as possible in terms of these layouts, these proposed bridge crossings. The overall site was designed in accordance with the 2004 Water Quality Manual, from a grading drainage standpoint. It does have, the, the overall layout includes Cape Cod curbing throughout the entire length of the proposed roadway. The roadway was designed in accordance with the subdivision requirements for horizontal curves, vertical curves, et cetera, to ensure that the roadway design does comply with the town of Monroe standards. From a soil erosion sediment control standpoint, we maintained a lot of the same best management practices that we did as part of the previous, previously approved application. It was designed in accordance with the 2002 Soil Erosion Sediment Control Manual, as provided by D E E P. And our S E C plan includes vegetated swales during construction, sedimentation basins, silt fence with hay bale backing, et cetera. Our proposed utility, proposed roadway utilities are consistent with what was previously approved. Everything is going to be installed underground, within the, within the right of way. It will provide electric, telephone, gas, and public water to the proposed industrial proposed lots. From a, we do have a planting plan, which was, which was designed to be consistent with what was previously approved. We actually did request and receive a waiver for street tree plantings, and what we did as part of the previous approvals, which we're incorporating into this design, is we're really focusing on the water quality basins and, oh, and some of the areas that are, you know, around these wetland corridors and these wetland crossings, and then some, some spot plantings in other locations, and along the, the lots themselves, each one of these lots will, ultimately, when they come before the commission, they will be required to provide a landscape plan, enhance that landscape buffer. And we, we, our proposal wants to make sure that, you know, we're providing rough grading to allow for these lots to come into the future, but each lot, as they come in, we'll have to do some additional grading to connect into the roadway, to develop their properties. So we don't want to plant, additional plantings unnecessarily, when they may just be disturbed in the future as individual lots come for development. And then this just shows kind of a rendering of, of the proposed roadway. So, I do have some pictures. The site as it was previously approved is currently under construction, in accordance with the former subdivision approval, the five lots. You can see that they've, the contractors installed a lot of the soil erosion sediment control measures, there's hay bales around the wetland areas, there's the crane mat crossings, which were detailed on the drawings, and were approved as part of the previous application. There is ongoing maintenance out here as part of this, and they're actually going to be, I'm doing some reparative measures to the crane mat crossings to ensure that all the appropriate best management practices are incorporated. And again, this is currently under review with the Wetlands Commission, and our next public hearing for this is, is next Wednesday. We do have comments from staff, both Will and Scott. We got some updated ones from Scott earlier this week, and, and Will, I believe, as well, if not maybe last week. For the most part, I think we can actually work through a lot of them. There were just two that I wanted to make sure we touched on, because there is a little bit of a, of a difference of opinion in regards to interpretation of the lot layouts. I wanted to bring that to the forefront, discuss it with the commission. One of Will's comments has to do with Lot 29. Lot 29 is a, is a 10-plus acre parcel. It provides the required minimum square along the property's frontage, here, which, which can be accommodated in this location, and it does have developable area along the front of the, the front portion of the lot. Now, Will is taking the position that this is a, is a rear lot, and we disagree with the definition, with, with that interpretation, based on the definition in the zoning regulations. Rear lots defined, let me just, the definition of a rear lot, the definition of a rear lot essentially says that a rear lot is defined as something where, where there's a narrower portion that, and it leads to the developable portion of the lot. This, this parcel, we demonstrated that it complies with the minimum square along the property's frontage, and we demonstrate, we actually provided a sketch which shows that you can develop this property, so we don't believe it's a rear lot, because there's developable area within that, within the front portion of the lot. There may be additional surplus land in the back, but the lot itself can be developed in that front portion, even if that rear land wasn't there. So we do not agree that-
How big is that building?
That's about 8,000 square feet, 3,500 square foot building. So, so there is developable area in the front portion of that site. There is no required minimum lot width in the zoning regulations, so we, we, you know, if, absence of a requirement, we comply. And again, the, the primary issue is that we do provide the minimum square along the frontage of the property in this location here.
Just, just as a side note, you really need to, if that's the interpretation, you need to provide that plan as a potential development plan for your wetlands.
Sure.
Just so that they're looking at the same thing these guys are looking at. Because I think the one you have right now doesn't-
Yeah, we, 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 we do show something on the overall plan. We're going to have to revise this, because we do believe that it is developable, and it does, it does not meet the definition of a rear lot.
And how large is the parcel of that, of that piece of property?
10.88 acres, so it's just under 11 acres.
Minimum lot frontage. On the map, it shows 160 feet. Am I reading that incorrectly?
There's another dimension here. It's a, it's a 200-foot frontage. It's just not all in a straight line.
And then, lastly, I do want to show on, as shown on the screen now, is a potential development plan, which is included in your submission package. As you can see here, the, the impetus of the redesign was really to accommodate a user for Lot 30, who's interested in coming to Monroe. Beachside Soccer is a, probably the premier club soccer team in the state of Connecticut. They're currently located in Fairfield. They do all their facility, they do all their practices. They do not have a home field, per se. They, where they practice at University of Bridgeport, University of Fairfield. They play all over, and they're actually very interested in coming to the town of Monroe, putting a considerable investment in building two, two fields with associated parking and, you know, you know, building in this location here. So, so this really was the driver, which required us to modify the subdivision. I wanted to, you know, get that out there, so everyone could kind of understand the impetus for this, because I'm sure this, as, as much as my office is, I'm sure this commission is also growing weary of seeing this application before then, because I think this may be the third or fourth time this, this subdivision has actually come before the commission. So, we're hopeful that this is the last time we'll have to come before this commission.
Trying to wear us down, aren't you?
You or me? You know, so, so with that, since we do still have wetlands pending, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission have, but that's essentially the, the brief summation of, of what I wanted to cover tonight. Now, I would, if the commission does have any specific feedback related to any of the comments that staff has offered or anything I've discussed tonight, I'd be happy to pick that feedback and incorporate it into what we present at the next hearing.
Well, since this is fresh in everybody's mind, let me go through if anyone has any immediate questions. Bear in mind that this application is going to be coming back, because they have now received wetlands approved already. So, good job.
Just a question about the issue regarding the vernal pools.
Yes.
What was, do you remember what the commission's position was that during the previous approvals?
The, the, well, as part of that, one of the reasons we're still in wetlands is we're, we're, we're providing an overall assessment regarding the vernal pools, which is something that actually wasn't required as part of the previous approval, but what we're doing is we're doing a comparison of what was previously approved, or currently proposing, and incorporating all of the recommended best management practices that we have incorporated into our design based on some guidance document that's available for developing in proximity to vernal pools. So, the commission's previous position regarding that was, we obviously received approvals, and we had potential development plans associated with that. You know, developing around vernal pools is tricky, because you want to make sure that you're, you know, the, to, just to educate the commission, a vernal pool is essentially depression usually in a wetland that provides standing water for a long enough period to allow for amphibian breeding, breeding, excuse me. So there are a number of vernal pools that have been identified on the site. There's one in this location here, one here, and then there are a number of vernal pools kind of in this wetland corridor, and also in this pocket wetland here as well. So, one of the things that we're doing as part of our wetlands application is because we are shifting that road a little bit further south, it does, it, it is a little bit closer to this vernal pool located here, whoever it is, create more separation from this vernal pool. And one of the things that you look at when you're developing your vernal pools is, they have a vernal pool envelope, which is 100 feet from the limits of the pond, and then they have a terrestrial habitat. That terrestrial habitat extends up to 750 feet from that pool, so the mature, mature vernal pool, I'll look at species, which may be salamanders, or frogs, or et cetera, they'll, they'll basically kind of travel within that 750 feet. It may or may not happen, and even for a vernal pool, it only has to demonstrate these features once every seven years to even be considered a pool. So, one of the things that we're providing for wetlands is, from an overall standpoint, let me pull up an overall aerial. So, there's some, there's been some recent documents and guidance from the Army Corps of Engineers regarding corridor development, rather than just looking at the overall terrestrial habitat. So when you actually really look at this, what happens is, there's connectivity here, which extends approximately a mile up and around this area here, which is under, you know, wetland areas that, that provides, you know, that wooded habitat, which actually kind of extends that opportunity there. It also continues further south, because this lane is owned by the town of Monroe. Further south from there is owned by Bridgeport Hydraulics Water Company. And then even with this, there's, you know, this, this provides a corridor where it continues this way to that same connectivity, and then this also has connectivity down to additional wetlands and likely vernal pools in this location here. So, so we've, we've designed this to incorporate as many of those best management practices as we, as we can. We're still in those discussions with the commission, with the Wetlands Commission, which is why we're, we still have that hearing open. But we do feel confident that based on everything that we've, we've done and the thoughtfulness we put into this design, that, you know, we'll be able to demonstrate to the commission what was previously approved, versus what we're proposing now, is, is generally, you know, will not have any certainly adverse impact to the wetlands themselves. And the vernal pools, we believe that there is enough connectivity and terrestrial habitat remaining, so that there will not be significant impact to those, to those pools themselves. And our, my soul scientist isn't here tonight, he, you know, this is a planning and zoning, not wetlands, but, you know, if the commission's really interested in that, we'd certainly be willing to have more discussion and dialogue about it. And we will provide to this commission a copy of our vernal pool assessment that we're preparing as part of this potential development plan. One other note is, you know, when we've gone through this process before, we knew we were going to have to deal with vernal pools as we came through individual lot development. One of the things that we're doing now, which is inconsistent with what was done before, is we're providing this overall assessment at this time to make sure that, you know, we're not going to get into a situation where we approve a subdivision, we have lot lines shown, and then we aren't going to be able to get an individual lot approved. So, you know, we feel confident that we're going to be able to kind of get through this process with, with all the regulatory commissions, but that's essentially where we stand at this point.
That's the only question.
Kathy? Uh, yeah, um, just a couple of questions. I believe the roads in the park now are all private roads?
No, they're all public roads. They're all public streets.
They are, they are public?
Yes.
Because I was wondering if Timothy Hill was a public road that had been abandoned?
Timothy Hill is actually a public road. It's been a town road for quite some time. The town actually has a grant. They did some drainage work, but they never put the road back together, and they do have a, a grant to kind of repave that. When we actually had our pre-construction meeting for the previously approved Section 6, we actually met with Public Works. We talked about a schedule in terms of when they were going to come in and finish their paving, because, you know, providing this connection, this through road to, to Fan Hill Road, it really does offer a lot of other benefits, because, you know, right now, you can see here, you have Connecticut Precuses along Fan Hill Road, and currently, all those, you know, tractor trailers and, and heavy vehicles that kind of service those facilities, they all go down Fan Hill Road, almost traveling through residential neighborhoods, and what this is going to do, is this is going to be able to bring all that traffic off of Fan Hill, bring it through the business park, and give it that connectivity through Route 25, and, and, and prevent some of that, you know, heavy traffic going through more residential roads. I mean, even Garter Road right now provides another outlet to Pepper Street, and a lot of these vehicles can be seen kind of going down there, and that's not, that's a, technically it's a scenic road. So we think that this overall connectivity and this, this throughput through here will really improve that for all the residents and then around Fan Hill.
Okay. Um, going back to lot number 29, I think in your narrative, it says it's 17 acres. And I just wanted, is there a potential to develop the interior part of that lot? I mean, you, you demonstrated that this minimum square can sit on the frontage. But does the situation change if somebody wants to build something for that?
Oh, you know what? I apologize. When I said 10.8 acres, I was actually talking about Lot 27, not Lot 29. Yeah, I apologize for that. You're right, correct. It is, that is 17 acres. I'm sorry, I missed your question.
So my, my question really is, you know, if you've demonstrated that you, you're testifying that you don't feel it's a rear lot, because you can put a minimum square on the front of a property. So my question is, what happens if someone wants to build on the interior part of that property?
Well, they, they-
17 acres is a lot of land.
Yeah. They certainly could develop the, the interior portion of that property. We're, we're simply stating that because of the size of the lot, because we've demonstrated the, the minimum square along the property's frontage, we don't believe it meets the definition of a rear lot. And the importance of that is because your regulations specifically prohibit rear lots. You know, and I, I'd even like to note that one of the earliest iterations of this subdivision approval- approval actually had a true rear lot, which actually had only frontage, then it narrowed really down all the way towards the back which opened up to a larger property. You know, we've, we've, we haven't, we, we, we know rear lots aren't good, so we didn't design rear lots, we designed lots that, that complied with the regulations.
All right, I, I get the fact that, you know, you have a waiver for the street trees. I drove through the area again today and there's, you know, the trees that were supposed to be planted, I know I bring this up every time you're here, they're still not there. And, you know, you're telling us you're going to be doing some landscaping, you know, grading and get the lots ready for someone to move in. But I'm still really frustrated with the fact that the trees that were promised on the other part of the development are not there.
And, and I think that's, you know, I, I think you, you've certainly been on the commission for quite some time and I think through my experience coming before this commission, you guys have done a tremendous job of requiring things in your recent applications that weren't required in past applications. So, I think, I, I think part of this park's development is kind of a victim of that because in the past, you know, there wasn't as much of a focus on landscape plans for industrial buildings and for industrial parcels specifically in this lot.
But they were street trees and they were soldier course and it said, you know, why do you so, oh, that's old news.
No, no, but, no, you're, you're correct, but even through here, I think that same provision was done because it was, oh, it'll get developed as individual lots come through. What happened is a lot of these lots weren't required to provide that as part of that special exception permit process. I think what's happened as of recently is, if you look at Caruba, which is under construction, Axon Plastics, Mondial, the landscaping that's been proposed and installed as part of those developments are far superior than what was done previously.
Wrong question.
And I think, and I, and I think that's a trend that this commission should be proud of because that's something that is being dealt with not only in here, but throughout the, throughout the town. So, I think, I, I think you have a little bit of, you can take a little bit of confidence that as these lots do come in, you can require those, those additional plantings and landscape plans, buffers, et cetera, that, that kind of weren't done before. And I think as individual lots along this park may come back in for reapproval, it's certainly something this commission should consider and require as part of those applications.
Well, it looks kind of like a desert area when you drive through it. Oh, question about when, you know, the amount of excavated materials, the digging, blasting, excavating and all the work that's going to be done to get the lots ready to be developed. Question is, you know, how and where will that material be leaving the property?
Well, I mean, that material will, will have to be, you know, it can be processed in accordance with the, the, the current regulations and it'll leave the property via, you know, through construction entrances. You know, one of the things that we did provide as part of the previous approval was, provided a, a hall road specific for the removal of some of this material.
Through Pepper Street as opposed to Timothy Hill?
Uh, yes.
All right, that, that's my question, you know, where, where will these trucks all be taking this stuff through to Pepper Street?
The, the construction is going to come from the Independence Drive side and come out this way as we build towards Timothy Hill. There won't be any construction traffic going down Timothy Hill.
Okay, that, that, that was my question because that would be very intrusive, I think, to the neighbors. If it's just, this is a question that you discussed, it says clarification of the nine-inch blackout. What is blackout? I just, I couldn't find where it says-
On the footing detail for the-
The bridge?
For the bridge.
Okay, I just tripped over that word.
Yeah, you know, I'd have to actually, that was one of the most recent comments. Yeah, so, so we didn't even have, I didn't even have a chance to kind of look at that yet.
I watched a couple of other people, you know, what do they think it is? Someone suggested that maybe it was a sleeve for utilities.
Yeah, I, I never came across it, so I asked the question.
I'm not the only one that doesn't know what it is.
His guys are looking into the answer, so.
Yeah, no, exactly. And, and it's a nine-inch diameter blackout, so I think that's probably right. It is probably for utilities to cross through there, but we're actually able to-
I thought they might have a knockout.
Yeah, instead of a blackout. And, and we kind of took some of these details directly from the manufacturer. These are kind of their stock details that they provide.
I'm not questioning it, I just don't understand.
But that sleeve would be put ridiculous to the road, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, you know what, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to the manufacturer, find a little bit more detail on that.
Okay, that's it for me.
Yep.
The water supply, you plan to bring it all the way down Timothy Hill with this?
We're, well, we're, we're installing water within the proposed subdivision right away and it'll, it would terminate at the existing cul-de-sac hatch.
You're not going to bring it all the way down?
No.
Leon, I contacted the water company in an effort to see if they wanted to, typically they, they're the ones that would extend it on exist, existing roads and they were, they were not interested, which I, I found surprising because usually when there's a short distance like that, they would want to connect in to increase their pressure and flow, but they said they didn't need it.
Is there water in Fan Hill?
There, there-
I don't believe so.
I don't think there is.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're going to, in other words, we're going to be doing the work in, in Timothy, which is going to become Independence. And now's the time to extend it down to, to service that area and they weren't interested.
They don't get the loop.
Well, they're going to get a loop if they extend it down and eventually-
Yeah, once Fan Hill is about-
If they, if they put water in Fan Hill.
Yeah, well, they could continue, yeah, if they can continue.
Continue that and they could-
You know, I, I will say though, while, while water isn't creating, isn't creating a loop, power is. So, right now, the park's been developed where, one of the reasons, one of the other challenges with the street trees is, right now throughout this park, power's actually run along both sides of the road, or I believe it's one side of the road, but, but it's done with a loop system so that each lot is actually serviced from both ends of the, of the electrical distribution network. So that it's, it creates a complete loop where if they have to work on one side of the line, all the buildings can still be served from the other side of the line. One of the things that we're incorporating here is while we extend utility, extend power through the new Independence Road, the power company, power in Timothy Hill to connect into that, to create that full loop all the way from Fan Hill, all the way through the park itself. So, that actually will be a considerable improvement to the electrical distribution
All right, so you plan to do any work on Timothy Hill?
Yeah, I have two questions. The lot that is maybe considered a rear lot, you mentioned that you can develop the front section of it with certain, you know, required building size. What's the minimum lot size for that?
Three acres.
Three acres. And is, and is that area three acres, the front section?
Yeah, three acres, it could essentially be right about here.
Up to that point?
Yeah, so we could, you know, again, we could, if we wanted to, we could move this line and make this a three-acre lot and it would comply with-
Fully comply.
Fully comply.
Okay.
Say that again?
We could redraw this line and provide a three-acre lot that would fully comply, that wouldn't have a larger development, a, a, an expanded or additional development area near the property.
How would you do it other than cutting off? I don't know how you'd do it three acre.
Then you have an interior.
No, no, I mean theoretically, if we were to move this line and have it come this way, this would be a larger parcel, this would be a three-acre parcel and it would not be a rear lot. This would just be twenty-some odd acres.
Yeah, I was just questioning if that, that front section complies on its own, you know, as far as acreage and, you know, lot size and everything else, that's-
It could.
Sounds like it does.
It could, yes.
Okay, and then my other question was regarding, in the narrative, you, you mentioned that roadway layout was designed to minimize site disturbance. This is, this is the current narrative.
Yeah, and-
So, my question is, I assume previous designs probably minimize site disturbance and this one is, is more based on the, the, the need of the layout of the lot as opposed to site disturbance. It doesn't really minimize.
It, it's a, it, that's a fair statement, it's probably a combination of both, you know, given some of the constraints that we have where we now actually have, you know, businesses that are, that are interested in coming and we're trying to accommodate them. This does obviously push the road down and it, and it, and it, you know, does require excavation, the previous approval required excavation as well.
It doesn't minimize, I mean, that's my point. I think the area green there, that's, that's like a steep slope area that's-
Yes, that's correct. That's, so that's basically a stabilized slope, three to one slope chasing back towards existing grades, which is consistent with what was previously approved. So, the previous approval also had an extensive limited disturbance on both sides as we caught back up to existing.
Not to that extent though, I would say.
To a slightly lesser extent, yes.
And, and, and you're going to be able to provide proper access, grade, grading wise to get to those lots?
Yes, and actually, one of the, one of the challenges with the previously approved application was it required a lot of site distance easements over adjoining properties. This roadway layout actually includes some of that, it reduces the requirement for some of those easements. So, from a, from a, an access standpoint, we think this is a little bit of a, of an improved situation than what was there before. But yes, we can provide adequate access to all, all the, all the lots with safe means of ingress and ingress and egress. You know, we do have, excuse me, similar to the, the previous approval, we had, here we had a, a driveway which would kind of provide access to two lots. We were able to mim, mimic that with this where we are providing a driveway here. However, we did also provide independent, additional independent driveways on that road.
Your development plan shows that common thing?
Yes.
Quite far correctly, irrelevant to the lot that it gives the easement to. Isn't that all grading between that building and that?
Yes, this is, this is higher, so this actually wouldn't be, this would essentially be-
Holding easements.
I, I think conceptually is, this is one way to develop this lot, you could do it a different way and actually connect into this.
This is the soccer? This is the proposal, the possible soccer?
Yes, the potential development plan.
There going to be a building there too?
Yes.
Indoor and outdoor soccer?
All, all outdoor soccer, the, the building would include locker rooms, some administrative office areas, kind of like a room for parents to come on a train, things like that. Homework stations for the players.
Okay, that's all I have.
Well, I have a couple of questions or issues. One is that, I mean, I agree with, I think, I don't know if it was Will or Scott that wrote this back lot-ish piece. And, I mean, it, it looks like it is a back lot, the way that the subdivision is set out right now. If you look at their comments, one would be, those lots twenty-nine, it's pretty clear that is, it is a back lot. Even though it has a buildable square in the front, there's a narrow portion that measures less than the width of the required minimum lot frontage of two hundred feet that leads to a build, a rear area that is buildable. So, I don't know what you can do about that. I'm more concerned with that fact this is a very delicate piece of property as far as the, the wetlands goes and it's within the public water supply watershed.
The southern portion of the lot is, that's correct.
And it's the headwaters of the Aquanic River.
Actually, all of the, all of the drainage area associated with the subdivision road actually drains through the Great Pine Swamp to the north and does not get to the headwaters of Aquanic.
How about the southern lots?
Even these lots, as we've laid them out from potential development plan standpoint, the, the bridge line is essentially kind of through here, so all of these lots actually drain to the north.
Mostly I'm concerned with the, the problem with the vernal pools and I, I did read Calhoun and Clemmons study that they did, I guess it was for T E E P, I'm not really sure.
Well, they did for the Army Corps of-
That's correct.
Corps of Engineering.
Yep.
And they're pretty adamant in the fact that narrow buffers, which is what you're kind of alluding to, providing insufficient to protect wildlife population in those two vernal pools, especially the one down in the southeast corner. I don't know, I mean, if I was a salamander, I'd much rather live over on the southwest corner, right in that area there. I mean, what's to stop the developer from putting a salamander sanctuary in there?
Economics.
Stopping inside part of that area. And you can see down at the bottom there, that is town of Monroe property.
That's correct.
It's the backside of the transfer station, which is open space. And that could be contiguous with that town property somewhere. Now, deed a few acres in there. I mean, I, I think the salamanders would be much happier in there. I mean, I realize north of the road is not your property or the applicant's property, but south of the road is, I believe.
What do you mean, they're both northern side?
Yeah, the, the-
No, the, the piece south of the road, yeah.
That's them and that's them.
No, to the left of the other two.
Oh, down here?
Yeah. That parcel down there which is-
It's not theirs too.
Sixty-four Cambridge Drive.
Right. Sixty-four North, sixty-four Cambridge Drive. Right, what's to stop the applicant from doing that?
I, I think the applicant has given some consideration to, to looking at conservation easements. That's something we may be discussing with the Wetlands Commission as well. And the vision is what happened at the time of individual lot applications, that's something that we're going to be working through with Wetlands.
Well, if you're going to approve this subdivision, in other words, if we're going to say these four lots as drawn are, are appropriate, that would be the time when we would want to see an easement, a conservation easement, which would be now, basically, you know, when you come back.
I could certainly discuss that with the applicant and-
I mean, a few acres in that southwest corner, including some of sixty-four Cambridge Drive, which is not buildable, obviously, it's all wetlands.
Yeah, the, the, one of the, the problem is that this is the area that's primed for conservation easement.
Right.
And this is not part of, part, this is not subject to the current application.
Right, but there is a little strip that is.
Sure.
Actually, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that because-
This is all sixty-four Cambridge Drive.
Yeah, no, I understand, that part I understand, it's the prime part of that. The, the, a little bit on the vernal pools, the amphibians, particularly the salamanders, for the most part live in the upland.
Yeah, the forest, well, the forest, upland habitat.
Which is not, which is not sixty-four, well, part of sixty-four Cambridge, but those wetlands are not where they really live. They live in the forest. And what the best management practices from Calhoun and Clemmons is, as I indicated in my report, is that they looked at a seven hundred and fifty-foot radius around the vernal pool and have identified that keeping development within the seventy-five hundred and fifty-foot radius to less than twenty-five percent disturbance of the, or loss of the woodland habitat is about the threshold before it starts impacting the overall ecosystem between the vernal pool, the amphibians and their upland habitat.
That's ideal, but I don't think that's practically-
No, it's, I'm saying, it's, well, right, it's at odds with the subdivision is what I said.
Yeah.
But I'm saying that they're saying, they, in blunt terms, is that if you want the vernal pools and amphibians to survive, eradicating more than twenty-five percent, you don't have a very good chance of that happening.
Well, I, I, I would offer that, and I don't know if you guys have seen it, but one of the things we're including in our vernal pool assessment is the guidance documents that they provided that talks about corridors and directional buffers.
Yeah, and, and I think you really should look hard at that because-
We have.
The studies do not show that particularly salamanders follow corridors. They may go this direction this year, that direction next year. You said sometimes pools aren't even there and they're not even there. And there have been things where people have tried to do trapping studies following the paths of, of salamanders and that's what they've found is they go in all different directions all different years. So, this whole issue of corridors actually goes beyond all light, 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 wildlife. Although they may find corridors through the fact that that's all they have and it changes the habitat or the animal species, that is not the natural path of animals. They do not really carry too- That is not the natural path of animals. They do not really carry too far. There's a lot more free rein in, in reality. But, you know, again, the difficulty is, to develop this land is at odds with these vernal pools, and the difference here or uniqueness is that there's several of them, and in this location, they're clustered and, but they're further enough apart from each other that everything in between is the terrestrial habitat, but it's also where the lots are, so.
I'm just trying to come up with a compromise.
Yeah.
And I know you, you want to develop this, but it should be developed, in my opinion, but, um, conservation easement in that area, I think would go a long ways to laying our worries. I mean, and I don't know why part of sixty-four Cambridge Drive can't be part of this.
Well, cause the, the subdivision application is for thirty-six Timothy Hill, right, so we can't, you know. The, the subdivision application itself doesn't include sixty-four Cambridge Drive.
Well, that portion of sixty-four Cambridge is pretty much the way it's gonna be from.
Right. No, that's a, that's a, you're absolutely right, that's a very fair point, and, and we have had, we have had some of those preliminary discussions, and we can certainly, I can certainly escalate those discussions if it'll help. You know, and I, and, and there, there is some, I do think there's some credence, some credence, excuse me. The, uh, you know, maybe that's a sign for me to stop talking about the vernal pools.
Okay. Um, no, that's the primary issue.
Um, I just have a couple of quick questions. The, back to lot twenty-nine, the western property line, is that a set line? Is that part of the perimeter of this parcel that's being subdivided?
Uh, that is a set line, that is part of lot twenty-seven, that's owned by a different entity, the western property line.
The western line of, of lot, that line?
Yes.
What's, anyway, your narrow point there is, what, about a hundred and thirty-eight feet, I think it was?
I believe so.
Is there any way you can squeeze another twelve feet through there and open that up to a hundred and fifty feet straight through to the back?
The, the challenge lies with how to develop lot thirty.
So is that known?
It, I mean, the, the.
I'm just asking, is it possible to make that strip twelve feet wider? And still maintain your slope on the adjoining lot?
No, we, currently, based on that design, um, it would have, it would require additional retaining walls or, um, a steeper slope, which may not necessarily have the same stability, so, again, based on our design, we, we've tried to, to, to do this the best we could.
And there's no chance of doing a lot line revision on that western lot, western lawn?
Uh, we haven't approached that landowner, again, cause.
I think, I think, I understand your point that you feel you're meeting the requirements by putting a hundred and fifty foot square in the front of the lot.
And there is no minimum lot width, there's no minimum lot width requirement.
By all practicality, you're going to be building on the back portion of the lot. And I, I think it's, it's kind of borderline as to whether or not it really meets the intent of the regulations. And if, if we, if you were able to provide a clear one hundred and fifty foot path to the back, I think that that would alleviate any questions or concerns that anyone might have. It's just throwing it out there. Just briefly, talk to us about, you're gonna be asking for a waiver on the slopes at the culverts?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, uh, for not getting to that. Um, consi- consistent with previous approvals, not only for this subdivision, but also other portions of the park, for the, uh, bridge crossings for the culverts. Um, for these headwalls, uh, here we go. We have a, a steeper one-to-one rip rap slope in some locations here, just to, um, bring that to great quickly, to reduce any impact to the wetlands or the regulated area. So that's consistent with what was previously approved and how it's been done in other portions of the park.
Okay, and I noticed in your cross-sections, and I think it was like stations six hundred and seven hundred, maybe even heading up towards eight hundred, your shoulders don't meet the standards set forth in the subdivision regulations, and I understand it's because of the, the headwalls, but you should try to get back to the required shoulders, you know, as quickly as you can, once you get past those points.
We can certainly look at that.
Uh, there was a note about legal instruments as a condition of approval?
Yeah, so as part of the exhaustive review of the legal instruments with Will, for the individual, uh, the easements, the deeds, et cetera, um, you know, we're, we, we're gonna follow and mimic that exact same form, we just would prefer to spend the time to do that once we know everything is set, so that if there's, if there is a change, we're not forced to do that twice. We're just trying to, you know, be efficiency and efficient in our work.
Okay. Um, vernal pools, I think we talked about enough for now. We already talked about the excavated material. In your previous application, you were proposing to stockpile a large portion of it on one of the southwest lots. Um, is that still pretty much the case?
Uh, I think, I believe so.
Do you have a rough estimate of your cuts and fills and what's going to be excess?
Uh, we do, it's included in the engine error report.
While you're looking for that, can I just ask, you kind of asked a clarification, so they're going to excavate and stockpile the so it's not gonna be immediately removed from.
Well, that, that was proposed in a previous application, so I want to see if that's.
I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're, what you're asking.
Because they're going to need a considerable amount of fill in other areas of this part of the park.
Right. It's approximately a hundred and twenty thousand cubic yards of material that will be removed as part of this roadway construction.
No, as part of the road, but then your, is a portion of that going to be used, like, on, for the soccer field?
It would be, yes.
I, I was trying to find out, what are you falling out in yardage?
Approximately, I mean, based on the road, approximately that, the, the, for the soccer field, for example, um, there's some additional cut, but obviously there is fill, there's a considerable amount of fill in this location here, but there is cut here. So I, I'm not sure exactly the calculations for that lot itself, but for the road itself, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand yards of export.
Going out.
Yeah.
And again, that's, none of that's gonna go down Timothy Hill.
Correct.
You had a note, um, about the plotting of ledge and the water table. I think, Scott, that might have been something that you were requesting?
Yeah, I, I had an issue with the, uh, basin in that it wouldn't drain out. We had talked about, uh, him putting in a drain in the bottom, but then the revised plans didn't really have that, so I just put it in.
Uh, uh, yeah, and we'll revisit that if it.
And the other thing I'm getting involved in is, uh, on those drains you put in the bottom, uh, looking at a gate valve so we can, uh, adjust the flow in the future.
Sure.
Used it on the, uh, something similar on the Wolf Park project. And it helps, you, you can shut the valve off and then slowly, um, open it up only if it's needed. So you don't drain the whole thing out.
Right.
Prematurely.
My only questions for, for right now.
Okay.
Will or Scott, do either of you have anything else that you would like to discuss tonight?
I'm just ongoing with your staff.
Um, quick, quick question. When material is stockpiled, is that, can, can that be an indefinite amount of time? Or whether at some point have, you know, when they, when this part of your pool is done, can that piles be gone?
Ultimately, it's, it's.
Or are they sit there waiting for the next project?
Um.
Can we reframe that question? Is there any proposed stockpiles beyond the road construction?
Thank you very much, Will, that was much better.
No. Thank you for that.
Okay. Anything else? What else? I'll open it up to the floor. Is there anyone who would like to, uh, comment in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, Mr. Solin.
Um, you know, with that, I guess, Will, uh, I appreciate the feedback from the commission this evening, and we'll continue to the next meeting.
The next meeting is, I believe, August, uh, August third, I believe, yeah. Yeah, August, okay.
I'm, I'm gonna be on vacation, so I may want to go to the next one. I'll, I'll, I'll work with Steph.
Our next, no, our next one has, has been rescheduled, it's not the seventeenth, it's the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Because at best, you know, Wetlands meet on the twenty-sixth, even if they deliberate, then they'll vote at the following meeting, which is, uh, August, I forgot what that one is, uh, later, it's later in the month.
Maybe we should plan on the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-third, I think. This would be the day before.
That would be the next.
Yeah.
In when Wetlands.
Cause the second is fourth Wednesdays, right?
Yeah, what happens is, yeah, you're right, so the, the earliest that could happen is the twenty-third is, is the Wetlands. If they vote on it that night, then we can get the letter for the following night at P and Z at the twenty-fourth, go back to that.
So there's probably no sense in coming back on the third.
I agree.
Okay. How do you want to do the twenty-fourth?
Great. Well, do we need an extension letter?
We don't need an extension to get to the twenty-fourth. And I'm not comfortable skipping over a meeting and then have our clock end.
Well, can Mr. Solin give us an extension on that?
He can then, he can now, I'm just thinking on planning, cause we're, we're skipping a meeting, so we're losing a, you know, a period of time that is open to the commission to find on this application. So I would, if you're willing, to give us, uh, even though we don't need the extension to get to the twenty-fourth, but should the commission deem it necessary that you give them the extension to the following meetings?
We certainly would be willing to do that. And if you'd like me to do that now, I'm happy to.
Yeah, I would like to.
I, I mean, it goes without saying probably, but it would stay on the agenda as being continued.
Yes.
Okay, all right, continue to the twenty-fourth. It is eight oh six, moving on. Z C A, well, I'll read the, this is the legal notice, Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held on July twentieth, two thousand seventeen. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, seven Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, July twentieth, two thousand seventeen, at seven P M or sooner or after, concerning the following. Z C A, two thousand seventeen dash oh two, file number one zero one one D, Old Webb Road. Planning and zoning commission proposed zone boundary change to change a portion, approximately zero point five acres, of an existing road right-of-way, Old Webb Road, commencing at its intersection with Monroe Turnpike, from residential and farming District Three to business District Two. Complete details and copies will already be materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. You have a list of exhibits, Will?
Yes. Exhibit number one, zone boundary change petition application with detachments, municipality referral notices. Exhibit three, regional planning referral notices. Exhibit four, zone boundary change map with the Butters list. Exhibit five, fire marshal comments. Exhibit six, engineer comments. Exhibit seven, a Butters notice with certified receipts and green cards of the public hearing. Exhibit eight, chief of police comments. Exhibit nine, building official comments. Exhibit ten, uh, draft response referral comments from MetroCog. Um, that's all the exhibits.
Okay. Kind of juxtaposed. Am I supposed to work the computer and do the microphone?
Um, as the commission is aware, this is an application of your doing. Um, it relates to, um, a similar application of an adjoining property that was recently approved by this commission for rezoning. Um, that was the Mondos property, located here, which is an undeveloped parcel, which also was residential zoned and was, uh, recently approved to be a B, B two district. Um, if you recall, there was the right-of-way here for Old Webb Road. There was, um, inconclusive information or, or documentation as to who the owner of that was, which made it difficult for the Mondos petition to include that portion of land. When you did do that other property, that was excluded, and the commission took upon itself, as it may do, to oppose the zone boundary change at equal B two district for the right-of-way portion, or at least a portion of that, uh, right-of-way, extending from Monroe Turnpike to not all the way, but just this portion, which is at the edges of Mondos property, which flanks both sides of that right-of-way, and then there's another property to the rear, which is owned, um, by the Wiley's, and there's a portion of the right-of-way here, which is not being proposed to be rezoned. Um, it's a very small piece of land. Um, the impetus for doing the rezoning is to have a consistency across the, the properties, obviously, so it's contiguous from here, from, this is the, uh, old Stevenson Lumber property, the railroad, the Mondos existing property, and then the other Mondos property, so to have a contiguous zoning here rather than having something that, you know, impales through the, the business zone. The other thing it does, it, it, it does affect Mondos properties in one respect that if this was zoned residential, although the existing access to their property is off of that, that's historic, that's existing, um, the new, the undeveloped parcel could not use that for access into the business zone portion, because resident, you can't use the residential zone portion land to get to a, a business zone. Um, so that will take care of that issue as well. Obviously, there's no future development of the roadway associated with B two, other than the access related to adjoining properties. The draft, uh, comments from MetroCog, um, which is the only, uh, regional planning agency that responded to the response, to the referrals, was that this was of no regional impact, um, meaning they don't have an issue from a, from a regional planning perspective. Comments from, I don't believe there really, there are comments that were received, um, basically from the police, the fire, and I think, Scott, you as well, were that you had no comments?
Correct.
Right, so there were no comments from those, those who did come. And that's it in a nutshell.
Any questions?
The legality of the road situation?
Um, since, actually, since the, uh, the last application, um, and I think it was part of when I was putting together some of the papers for this application, I did come across a reference in one of the, um, the deeds or maps that actually made reference to Old Webb Road being a town road. Now, that's just a reference. Now, that's just a reference in somebody's deed. It doesn't mean that it's accurate, but it is something I found that we didn't have beforehand. And I think it always was believed that this was the old road, I think State Route 140 or 141. That's what's been shown on some maps. It became obsolete when Route 34 was built. And it most likely was handed over from the state to the town. How that happened, whether that was official, verbal, or just a matter of happenstance back in the 30s, I don't know how that thing happens, but it probably was not as formal as it is today. And at some point, the town might have maintained it or made, made, had not. And it just, over years, just disappeared in the world of, of things. A portion on the other side of the river, where the road did continue, because there was a bridge at one point, is maintained by the town in Newtown. So, obviously, for them to do that, they would have had to receive that portion from the state as well. So, it's kind of falls in suit that it fell to the town in one way or the other. And it just didn't have a need for a road, especially when the bridge went out. And also, 34 just negated the whole purpose of the road. So, it is likely that it is a town road. If it has not been, there's no record of it being officially received or abandoned. But either way, the town has the, your commission has the authority to rezone it, if it so chooses.
Got it, and anything?
That's not the only access to that lot.
To which lot?
To the-
Back lot.
The back lot, I guess, yeah.
Yes, it is.
That is the only access, okay. So, currently, that lot is not developed?
No, there is a house on it.
There's a house on it?
Yes.
And-
The house is-
So, it's access from that?
Right, right there.
Yeah, and you access through that.
Through that point.
I don't know if, well, Mr. Wiley is here. I don't know if he has access on Route 34. And they don't have access, I mean, you don't have frontage.
So, currently, it exists.
But regardless of whether it's a road or abandoned, the rights that they own, with regards to passage, never go, don't go away. So, even if the town was to know that it owned it and decided to officially abandon the road, the private right of passage of the rear lot is retained under a state law.
So, it's not an issue for that resident, that owner, currently, but it potentially-
We're not changing anything about access or rights of access. All we're doing is changing the zoning classification in which that land falls in.
For a potential future impact, or to make it compliant today?
The reason, as I understand why the commission was putting this forth, was to have that contiguous, contiguousness of the zone. So, you don't have something reaching or encroaching through the middle of, or segmenting the business zone.
But other than that, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything else?
I mean, again, there's no development rights within the right-of-way, as long as it stays a right-of-way.
It allows access to the northern property then.
But you already have access.
No, not, I'm not from a residential district.
Let me put it differently. Let's say that the town acknowledged it as a town road and started maintaining it as a town road. It'd be no different than any other town road. So, the only thing we're really doing is changing the zoning classification in which it sits.
But it is not being maintained.
So, if you think of Spring Hill Road, which comes into Monroe Turnpike way down south, well, the beginning of that is in the LOR district, and then it turns into the residential district. It'd really be no different than that.
Yeah, I was just curious as to what is, what is, what are we accomplishing, other than making it, you know?
Well, you're accomplishing two things. One, you're making the zone contiguous. Also, it does help the development of this parcel. Because at the moment, although it has frontage here and it has frontage here, obviously, there's not ideal frontage for access point of a driveway, because it's so close to this intersection. And there's also grade issues. And then, of course, the culvert crossing for the, the river underneath the road. But right now, although you approve that for the B2 district, this road has limitations for its use for an access driving into that property, because you cannot gain access to a commercial private via residential.
Okay, well, then that's-
And if you know the land, you know, that access is really not going to go any further, pretty much, here. But, you know, who knows, do we see a development?
Okay.
Michael?
No questions.
All right, let's open it to the floor.
Okay.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is William Wiley, and I live at 1609 Monroe Turnpike. I'm here to speak out in opposition to the proposed change, in spite of past statements by parties and agencies beside myself against rezoning one of the adjacent parcels on this right-of-way. The commission chose to ignore us and rezoned it anyway for the gain of one individual. That's the way it appears to me, as the town is not taking any action against the owner for his documented zoning violations over the past year and a half. And now, the commission has almost immediately acted to rezone the single-lane road, claiming it's needed to allow access for the rezoned parcel, when the adjacent B2 parcel already uses it. If it is rezoned as B2, who is going to maintain it? We do the maintenance now and fix it when it is damaged by runoff from Mondo's property. Item 19 of the narrative states that stormwater management will be controlled and treatment, and is to be described as part of the narrative, and it's not done. I'm looking at the, that was submitted with it. In addition, I found errors in the description of the zone change versus the maps. The maps refer to, it says that 172 feet of frontage on this zone change will be included in that, on our property. The map that's submitted here does not show that, which is correct. The narrative that was submitted by Lewis and Associates, which actually says in it, bounded westward by the land now formerly of Geraldine William Wiley, for a distance of 172 feet, more or less, which is correct. This map does not show any of the frontage on our property from here to there. Does it showing up on there? Does not show any of that up. It does not show on the map, so there's a discrepancy between what the narrative versus the map is saying. I also understand that a map was supposed to be filed, a result of the zone change of the private parcel at 1615 Monroe Turnpike. Has not happened. Why not? How much longer will town continue allowing zoning violations occur on the two adjacent parcels, while being so concerned to make a zoning change on this road?
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this?
Geraldine Wiley, 1609 Monroe Turnpike. Really does not know that I was going to stand up, because I didn't decide until just this minute to do that. When he mentioned that we maintain that road, every time it rains hard, the runoff from Mondo's property washes the road out. We hired a company to come in and regrade it, and within an hour, he was out there vandalizing the, the things that they had done to try to stop the runoff. He dug a trench along the side, does not maintain that, it fills up with leaves and branches, and the next time we get a heavy rain, it washes the road out again. So, even though we have been dealing with this for 40 years or so, well, since he built his place, which is not 40 years, we've been living there 41 years, we have not complained to the town about it, we have just taken care of it. But now, this is like a slap in the face to us. There used to be a stop sign at the end of that road. And we know who kept knocking it down, but I'm not mentioning that, because that person told us that he was knocking it down. And it would turn, somebody would come up and put it back up again. Somebody was acknowledging it was a road at one point, until it finally just didn't get put back up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who has any general questions or comments? Back to you, Will.
The issue about the property description, I think that is correct. There is a discrepancy between the narrative and the map, but the map has a different description than the narrative does. And the net, the description of the property, which was also circulated with referrals and was filed with the clerk's office, is, is what's on the map. And the map is, is, does not include the other area that you're, you're finding discrepancy in. So, there is discrepancy, but it is clear on the map. And the map is what's being proposed, is being approved, and that's what would be recorded.
So, the narrative is, is-
The narrative is older than, than the, the map.
So, the map is correct?
The map is correct. It has the lesser area. When the initial application was put together, there was, half of this was being included. We did get that narrative from Tracy Lewis's office. And since that time, in the finishing of the map, it narrowed down to just this area, and it was re-described, which is up on, up a portion of the map.
Any other questions or?
Yes, Will, so now that the town does own the road, I started to ask before-
Well, it hasn't been still determined that the town is the only road. All I said is I found a reference in somebody's deed referring to it as a town road. But again, you know, people put a lot of things in deeds, it doesn't make it necessarily true.
If in fact, there has been a stop sign that came and went, somebody put it up, I'm not sure that that acknowledges that it was a road. My question is, who will maintain that road?
The town does not maintain it now, and, and, I mean, I can't speak for the Department of Public Works, but they do not maintain it now. I mean, if the owners want to pursue, the owners abutting that, want to pursue the town, that's not here, that's really the GPW. My children have no-
That's it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Will, anything else?
Unless you have any other questions, your options, if you need more information, you would keep it open. If you have no more questions, I would suggest you close the, the hearing.
What's the commission feel? Okay, hearing's closed. Thank you. Site plan review. Item number seven, SDP 2017-02, file 12235 Corporate Drive. Site development plan to occupy an existing warehouse building and add outdoor storage consisting of shipping containers in an I3 zone, 35 Corporate Drive. This is continued from July 6th. Will, do we have anything new?
Do you have anything since that last meeting?
Good evening. My name's Robert Sonnixon. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm a principal with Waldo and Associates. Our office is in Guilford, Connecticut. I'm the design engineer for the property owner, Peter Gennardo Enterprises. We went through the revised application last month, or last two weeks ago. There was, my recollection and my notes indicate that the primary reason for coming back tonight, I'm going to postpone it for a while. The primary reason for coming back was to give the, the members of the commission who hadn't viewed the site, an opportunity, if they wanted to, to go out and take a look at the site. I took the opportunity of taking a series of photos of the building from numerous different vantage points down at the intersection of Pepper Street, as well as along Corporate Drive and some other views of the site. If there are members who haven't had the pleasure of seeing it and would like to take a look at it, I can show you them tonight. In addition to that, I did a little bit of additional research into arbovitae. We talked about the arbovitae species that are proposed to be planted along the top of the slope and clusters, immediately to the east of the proposed container locations. And I found that we're proposing 10 to 12-foot arbovitae. They're very fast growers. Question came up. They grow three to five feet a year. And they are very effective at forming a, a very good screen. They quickly form privacy screens. And they're very hardy plants, and they are very attractive. I brought a brochure that I, that I'll submit for the file. And I also put that as, made that a PDF, and I could show it to you tonight, if you'd be interested. And I looked at the regulation. It was brought up with regard to the screening requirements. And basically, your, your screening requirements indicate that in industrial districts, first in industrial districts, up to 20% of the floor area is permitted for outside storage. Our plan is well under that 20% floor area requirement. And then it says, "All materials shall be covered and screened from the street and adjoining properties subject to the landscaping provisions of Article 7 of your regulations." And Article 7 indicates that landscaping shall provide, in the judgment of the commission and in a reasonable time, the required amenities or visual barrier between different land uses. So, at, at, at a growth rate of three to five feet a year, 10-foot arbovitae, in a three-year period, will reach a height of, of 20 feet. The way that we have them staggered on the site plan is the recommended way of forming a screen using the arbovitae. One other question that came up was, you know, could we reasonably increase the height of all of the proposed arbovitae to 10 to 12 feet? The ones on the, the southern end are recommended to be six to eight feet when they're planted. And one of the things that, that the photos that I took, and I think that if you go out there and take a look at it, you'll see that the southern end, from about the midpoint of the, of the property south, there really is very little visual access to the location that the storage containers are going to be. Really, most of it is up between the first light pole and the third light pole, which is sort of in this reach right here. There's only about six double-stacked row, one row of double-stacked containers that is in what I would call the visibility zone from, from Pepper Street. Adjoining properties visibility, that's an interesting one, because the adjoining property immediately to the east is much lower, and it has much less visibility, actually, of the building than, than from down at Pepper Street. And the piece across this, they're all undeveloped parcels across the street. And from the north- And from the north side of Corporate Drive, you really can't see across, because there's a mound of elevated vegetation and landscaping along the frontage of Corporate Drive. So, in our opinion, the, in a reasonable time, the visual barrier between the different land uses, and we'll call that the public road and/or the adjoining properties, will be very effectively screened by the arbovitae's that are proposed. And we also talked about container support, and the curb height. And my position in what we said was the curb won't be, the containers won't be supported by the curb line. And as a practical matter, they can be elevated. In talking with, in talking briefly with NBC, they indicated that there are pads, and I have another picture of the pads on the containers, they're really only about less than two inches high. But what they do is, in their words, they elevate the corners using dunage. And dunage was, the question came up last meeting, what's dunage? And I went and took a look at it, and dunage is a term, it's a shipping term, it's a marine shipping term. And it's interesting, because these are marine containers. And dunage is the material that they use to level on the ship, the containers and/or place between the containers, so that they don't bang against one another when they're on the high seas. And so, NBC said, you know, we're used to dealing with an undulating landscape, and we can level our containers and adjust them however we need to. And so, they're confident that the plan that we show that doesn't remove the curb will be successfully, will successfully address their needs. The curb could be taken out, the curb could be lowered. It really doesn't matter to the end user. They're going to be storing their containers, and they feel that they can adequately accommodate them. I like the idea of putting the one foot of crushed stone immediately on the down, on the south, east side of the curb line, so that, as we had in our previously approved plan, so that any dripage off the containers will go onto crushed stone. And also, they use, the dunage that they use is either wood or concrete blocks on the crushed stone and adequately support the containers. So, we really feel, and the tenant feels, that that's really a non-issue. The drainage will continue to go to the existing catch basins and drain freely and effectively as it does now. If you go out there and take a look at this area, the way that it's graded, it's graded to drain to the catch basins. And so, the driveway goes up a little bit and down a little bit. That's your classic grade-to-drain design. It's not completely flat as a pancake, and so, they are going to have to be doing, they want them to be completely level, so in some cases, one side might be elevated a little bit, but that's perfectly acceptable to the end user. Then the last question that came up, and I went over this last time. Question came up, you know, why can't we use the area in the back? And the answer to that is that this is the tenant, this is NBC Sports' operation, and they said that their entire operation is going to take place in the rear of this property. There will be, the office is up in the northeast corner, and there will be some coming and going from a very small office space, which is going to be less than 2,500 square feet. There's going to be a break room back there, and bathrooms back there. But most of the coming and going is going to be along the back. There are two doors, access doors next to the loading dock, one right here and one right over here. Deliveries, small UPS deliveries to the warehouse will pull in and park in this area between the loading, the two loading docks and enter one of the two rear doors. The vast majority of the employees who work in the warehouse space will be parking in this area, and repair trucks will be coming in and parking in this area behind it to gain access through the two rear doors into the main warehouse area. So, all of the activity, as well as the trailer trucks that use the loading docks, will be in this area. NBC just simply does not want empty containers stored for a long term, when they feel like they'll never even go out in the front. These are going to be stored here, taken when they're needed, but they're not, there's not going to be any activity in this area, whereas there's going to be, all of the activity from the project will be in the rear area. So, that's where they, there'll be some also, there's a drive-in overhead door on the south side, so occasionally, there'll be activity coming and going, and there will be some use of the south side of the building. There'll be use of, a lot of use of the west side of the building in the loading dock area, and there will be limited use of the north side of the building, because the main office space is there. But there will be no use whatsoever, active use of the southern side, eastern side of the property. So, those were the main things. Would the commission like to see the photos, or...
If you have them readily available, we might as well...
Yeah, I have them on a flash drive. I think I'd be able to do it. Can I just swap it out?
You already pulled it out.
What?
You already, oh, I thought you already pulled it out.
Okay. Now, I've got, the images are all in, first we'll go through the images, then we'll go through the arbovitae brochure, and then we'll take a look at the container support just This is a view, sort of from up in the parking lot next to the building, looking down. I wanted to show that this is one of the fir trees that's already on the embankment, and to show that vegetation's in great shape. I wonder what, I can't scroll through it, through them, can I?
No, they're individual.
I might be able, might be able to arrow forward.
Can I, is there an arrow?
On the keyboard.
Oh, on the keyboard? Let me try that. No.
They're individual files.
Do I have to? Okay, I'm sorry, I, you know, we'll...
In the future, you're going to make one PDF.
So, I just close out of it and then go back in?
Yeah.
This is another view of the top. Keep in mind, this light and the light that's two down, there's another light in the middle, and then there's a third light over in this location, because it's going to be, you're going to be able to see them again in a couple of later photos. This is the view from, I'm standing at the intersection of Pepper Street and Main Street, looking up Corporate Drive. That's that first light pole that I showed. The corner of the building is right over here. There's another light pole that's behind this tree, and then the third light pole's over in this area here. So, that's kind of the extent of what you can see. Just for your information, the bottom of the windows is 11 feet off the ground, the top of the windows is 15 feet off the ground, the top of the building is 24 feet above the ground.
How high are the containers?
The single-stack containers will be 10 feet, and the double-stack containers will be 20 feet.
And that's going to be another half to a foot higher, because it's elevated off the ground.
Yeah, there'll be 20, 20 and a half feet probably to the top. So, this is the first light that I mentioned. There's another light behind here, and that's the third light, and that's the extent of what we're...
For the commission's information, I measured the light poles, and the top of the light pole is 15 feet above the ground.
Right. So, the containers will be above the top of the light poles. Within sort of this section over here and farther south where it's obscured.
Will they be blocking the lights? Or are you just using it as a reference point?
Excuse me?
They're not going to be blocking the lights, just using it as a reference point.
No, we put them next to the lights, they won't block the lights.
They'll block the light, they won't block the light.
The light won't be able to, the light will not, will shine toward the building, it won't shine on the top of the containers, but NBC doesn't have a problem with that. This is now on Corporate Drive, and you can see where the corner of the building is. And once you start going up Corporate Drive, all of the street trees really do a good job of blocking the... That's sort of, as you're getting up close to it, there's this big rise of earth, and that's the first, actually, this is not the first pole that I showed you. The first pole that I showed you is the second pole here. This one's right at the corner of the building. This is the way that it looks from up above. You can see the, once again, this is 11 feet up to the bottom of the window, 15 feet to the top, and 24 feet to the roof line. That light pole that's behind the tree that I was showing you from the other side a minute ago.
This is the front or the back?
This is, huh?
This is the front or the back?
It's actually the side of the, it's the side of the building. The front's on Corporate Drive. This is the east side. We've been using that as the term.
Well, it's the front of the building, but it's not the front of the Corporate Drive front.
Yeah, the front of, you know, it's a funny thing. That's the front yard.
The building is sideways.
The building's on the angle.
This is all the side. That's just another view of how thick the vegetation is going down the slope in that location. I thought I had one. That's looking toward Pepper Street from up on the parking lot. I thought, and there are the, there are the streetlights standing in the parking lot. Those are the streetlights at the intersection of Pepper Street. This is all Russian olive and different, you know, deciduous vegetation, that's true. That's the reason that we chose to use the arbovitae's. And then, the arbovitae's, you can see that you can get a one to two-foot tree for a bargain price of $16.50. Once you get to five to six feet, they're $119.50, and it goes up sort of from there. I just, this is the zone that they're hardy in. It's kind of interesting, I'll put the brochure in the file, it talks about, it's a, these particular arbovitae's are a combination of Pacific red cedar and a Japanese variety, and they, you know, that's the sort of screen that they produce in a relatively short period of time, particularly when we're going to be planting 10 footers, and in a few years they really grow.
Is this species, okay, there it is, deer-resistant.
What is that?
I want, it's deer-resistant. I know some species of arbovitae deer really enjoy.
You know, as a matter of fact, this one is deer-resistant.
Yes.
So, I, you know, this is a brochure from a company that's trying to sell them, but I, you know, if they're not deer-resistant, I don't think. So, you can see, we're right in the heart of sort of the good zone. I find it fascinating that you can tell where the really nasty climate in the U.S. is, because that's the only place that they can't be used. Mature height, 20 to 40 feet. Mature width, six to 12 feet. Green giant arbovitae is one of the fastest-growing plants you can find. Not only is it fast, the growth is dense, initial growth rates can be three feet in a single year, and growth is steady and fast. So, there's more, you know, ideas about how to plant them, how wide to plant them apart. Our plan staggers them in this sort of way, and that is really the way to form the essentially impenetrable screen that you're looking for, the very popular hedge plant, because they're beautiful every day, they're fast-growing. Anyway, that's the, that's a little bit more information on the arbovitae's. With regard to the container support, what block should I use? They talk about using treated pine sleepers or block. And then, this is a photo of the support. So, they have these on the corner, and they lock them together for transport when they use them on ship. But they raise them, they can raise them up easily, because there's a rail that is also a structural member along the entire length of the side. So, once again, I'll put this in the file. Apparently, you can, you can lift, I think if they're apty, you can lift them up with a crowbar, but I'm not really sure. They seem to be showing that here in the photos. But anyway, that's the, that's the support, and as I indicated, NBC has absolutely no concern about making them safe and stable, leaving the curb in place and not using the support. And that's about everything that I wanted to cover tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Jonathan, I'll go to you.
I live about two minutes away from that intersection, and in my opinion, if you put the arbovitae's in, it should cover it mostly. Chairman Porter mentioned last time about buying a little bit taller ones in the beginning, about the 12-foot ones.
Yeah.
Because that would take about a year of growth off the estimate to get up to that 24 feet by starting at 12 instead of 10.
That was when, let's see if this is... All of the ones that are going to be planted in this section are going to be 10 to 12 feet high. The only place that we recommended them being lowered is we really didn't feel like we needed to have them down here. We could do a number of things. We could put more up in this section. We're also bringing, putting them around this part of the corner, so that you wouldn't see them as much from Corporate Drive, but, yeah, all of the, all of the trees that are being planted in the real critical area for screening are going to be 10 to 12 feet high.
Right. I mean, my concern is not really Corporate Drive, it's more Main Street and the intersection with Pepper at that point, because Corporate Drive is only really going to be used by NBC Sports, right?
Right. Please go up there. I was up there the other day, and there was, policeman was patrolling and doing his notes and things like that. But you're right, there isn't really any, any reason for any, and it's posted no trespassing. Literally, the place, the place, the one place in the world that you can see this building, and from a, from a real estate perspective, they, you want your building to be visible. There's a sign, you know, for lease down at the corner, and it's taken from the corner of Pepper Street. There's a sign, there's a sign, you know, for lease down at the, at the corner and it's taken from the corner of Pepper Street. You can see part of the building. It's a very attractive industrial building. Um, but if the one place you can see it is sitting at the traffic light at Pepper Street. If the light turns green and you go through, you can glance at it, but you can barely see it. Up and down Main Street, you can't see it because you should be looking at the traffic in front of you. Um, and the frontage along Route twenty-five is so vis- visually impenetrable. You can't see anything back there, way down to the fire station. So, um, that's the one place, um, the one place, and you can't see it too far back on Pepper Street, but Will knows about it because he, he travels it all the time and, um, you, you can see, you can see the building. Um, and we are, um, our, our, we, we believe our screening meets the screening requirement um, in, in your regulations for outside storage.
But you, the applicant is going to purchase the taller arbovites to start because?
Yes.
It, it just takes one less year.
Right. Right. If you plant, you know, tha- that's what you, you said. It says, within reasonable, a reasonable amount of time, it has to meet the, the goal of being a, a screen. Reasonable, it'll be less, the reasonable amount of time will be shortened by planting the larger trees.
That's all I had.
Um, I was, unfortunately, I was not able to be at the last meeting. I just have two quick questions. Um, the lights will be dark sky compliant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Well, they're not, they're not doing anything with the lights.
The lights already are.
They already are, okay, that's fine. Um, and how about signage? Did you bring any?
Um, NBC, i- i- interesting, the, um... NBC, it does not, at this point in time, planning on, it's a, you know... If you go down to their NBC Sports headquarters down in Stamford, um, you, you have to know where you're going. You drive in and it's all little tiny signs like this, you know, parking for NBC Sports. They're, they're not into big peacocks and splashiness.
They believe in being discreet.
Huh?
They believe in be- being discreet.
Well, they're, yeah. I mean, however, you know, I think the Economic Development Commission was thinking it would be great to have a nice big sign that says, "Welcome to Monroe, home of NBC Sports." But, um, it, uh, nothing's proposed as part of this application.
That's it.
Yeah, I went to the site. I saw, I said, "Did you reach out to them and see if, like, I don't mind being, the container's ten feet high. When you get to twenty feet high, it's gonna take a while to screen." I was up there and even if you put the, the trees in, it's gonna take probably three or four years to get them screened. Without a doubt. There's no doubt in my mind that that's not gonna happen and that's the way it's gonna be. But that's why, and I went behind the building, there's plenty of room behind the building. And I did go look behind there and that's why I asked you if they would consider, I don't mind putting the single row, but when you start doing double row, you cut it down a little bit because it's gonna take a while to screen them.
They are, this section here, um, there's no access to the building and they, they would probably be more amenable to that. But the problem over here is that this is where all of the trucks come through and I just like that.
There's plenty of room behind there, even if you can bring tractor trailer trucks behind there, I don't know if anybody wants.
You know, we took a look at it and I sent a plan in to, to rip, to Will, um, with our response comments. I don't know if I can find it now. But when a truck is backed, when a fifty-foot truck, which isn't even the longest trailer truck, is backed up to the loading dock, if it pulls out, it actually goes right to the edge of the pavement to be able to make the turn. So the trucks pull in along here and then back in here, there's really not any space along the back wall, uh, to have, because there're gonna be trailer trucks coming in and that's really the, the problem with that. I, this area, they're, they've been adamant about because they want to be able to gain access through the two rear doors, uh, have deliveries from UPS, have repair trucks to be able to park there. I don't know where else we would put them. We already have twelve containers i- in the back over here. So, a- and, and at issue is, they own eighty-six containers. They, they belong to NBC Sports. They have to have a home for eighty-six. And, um, in order to have eighty-six, we've, single stacked ones that we felt were in the most critical location, but this is what's needed. We've also had conversation, um, that, the, the unfortunate thing is that there's a fifty-foot side yard setback and this particular unit right here is right touching the fifty-foot. So if we move them any farther this way, we start to get into conflict with the office that's on the southeast corner. There's some leveled ground over here off the pavement. We could probably stick a few over there, um, but it's within the side yard setback, which would require variance. So we're, we're kind of between, we're, we're, we're stuck.
No, I understand what you're saying, I, but I'm saying is that I know, because I went up there and I stood there and I, and I could see, I know how long it's gonna take to screen them. It's not gonna be, it's gonna be at least three, maybe four or five years to really screen them.
Before you get complete screening?
You're, you're gonna have, you're gonna have that time. I just, there's no doubt in my mind it's not gonna take that long because you're talking twenty feet and... I try to like visual it and figure out how long it, and, and I mean, there is a lot of tree growth there, don't get me wrong. But I'm saying, you can see the building from the street, there's no doubt. And you're gonna see those, not, you're not gonna see all of them.
Right.
But the ones that're closer down to the end there, you're gonna see and...
And, you know...
I mean, and, and at first, when we first approved it, everything was behind and we were good with that. You know what I mean? Because you had all screened. And now all of a sudden, and I can understand their point, everything's up front, but, you know, I don't mind working with them, but I, I just don't think that, that it's going to be, it's gonna take a while for them to... And that's why I asked you to reach out to them and see if we could do something in the back. I have no problem with the rest of the site at all. I have a problem with screening the containers because of twenty feet high. Not like they're just ten feet high, you know, like I can get away with a ten feet. We could screen at ten feet and you'll be good. You probably wouldn't even see them with a ten feet.
We asked...
And I'm not saying take them all. I'm saying take some of them and move them from twenty feet.
The other ones on the, all the way over to the right side are always single. The ones that aren't going, those are single.
So why couldn't we double stack those?
Excuse me?
Because those are invisible.
Oh, those are single, those are not...
These are single, the gray ones are single.
Those are ones that are visible, but even that, that's, if you go to that corner, I looked at it.
This group...
I think you need to get that group out there.
Once you get past this group...
Once you get past that group, you can't see them. But tho- that group there, you're gonna see. The double stack ones, there's no doubt in my mind you're not gonna see those.
It, the, the tricky part about it is, is...
How many containers is that with those, the ones with the...
There are a total of eighty-six.
Now, if I'm talking about the ones that you have, they're double stacked, the next, right there, how many is in there?
There's twelve here.
Six double stacked.
Six double stacked.
Six double stacked.
So you remove six of them.
Right. Question is where to. One of the things that we, we, there, there are a number of moving parts here and one of them is, is that we wanted to maintain, um, a, a twenty-four-foot wide travelway around the entire building, um, so that the fire department could easily get one of their larger trucks around the building. That, that's one constraint.
So on the left side of the building, what's the, what's the total width of that?
Um, that's less than a container. If you put containers for particular...
No, no, I'm saying, but what is that width? What's that width?
Arbovitae.
We, we talked about...
It's twenty-four plus another, um, at least eighteen for the department, but it's if not twenty.
Yeah, so it's not wide enough. You'd have to stack them end to end. And you could get maybe...
Container straight down there alongside there.
You might be able to get three in there. One of the, one of the other problems that we end up having is that, um, we meet the parking, underlying parking requirements with this layout. If we start splitting them up and scattering them around, we need a variance to the parking, um, requirement. So that, that's another battle that we're dealing with. Um, and then it's the, then it's the front yard and the side yard and the rear yard setbacks. Uh, really, it's a setback down in this area that would have to be varied in order to be able to use this corner for containers. If we could use this corner for, for containers, uh, we could certainly put those six right over in here, but we'd be, we'd require a variance, uh, from the zoning board appeals for putting the containers within the, um, building.
Or Mr. Darrell could do a lot line revision in about a day.
We could have, we'd have to do a lot line revision, um, but, um... That's a whole other round and, um, one, one of, they wanna move in...
The lot line revision could take a day. A variance would take you two or three weeks.
If we did a lot, okay, we, we could do a lot line revision and come back for another, yet another site plan approval.
No, you could do it within the context of it. I mean, if he was of the mind, he could do it very quickly. It's just a survey, he files it on the land records. Doesn't have to come to this commission.
You know, there hasn't been any objection to doing a lot line revision down in that corner based on the, the conditions of the, of the site, um...
Why don't we see what the other commissioners think? Do you have anything else?
Nothing additional, no, I'm fine.
I'm just a little, I, I was at the first meeting where you brought the plans and the first time and, um, so I'm a little surprised to see that they woke up and realized, oh, they won't work with the containers in the back. So that, that's a little bit of a surprise to me.
They've always wanted the containers to be in the front, um, but we really felt that we needed to come in and get the use approved. Because if the use wasn't going to be approved, um, it was a non-starter for the project in its entirety. After we got the approval, we sat, finally sat down with NBC Sports and they said, "Absolutely don't want them in the back in between the loading docks. Uh, where we really want them is in this nice out of the way place that they'll never be in the way, on the east side of the building." And we said that we would apply, um, to, to seek approval with the screening, uh, to locate them in the, on the east side of the building.
Right. I was out there earlier this week and I, quite honestly, I was surprised at how little of the building you can see from Main Street. But it's August, almost August. Deciduous growth is in full bloom. Um, I'm concerned about two things. When all the deciduous growth dies off in the winter, what's the, uh, what are you going to see? And what if that, I'm gonna call it the front lot, but it's actually the, the side lot. What if that lot becomes developed and all of that screening deciduous growth is cut down because a new building's going to build in there?
I don't have the entire industrial subdivision, but there's, there's, there are two lots between Main Street and... Hey, may I consume it on that?
This is, this is the name of the lot.
And then this, this is, oh, this is another lot here.
This is the second lot you were talking about.
Yeah, that's the second one I was talking about.
But that, this second, this lot takes care of most of them.
This lot is in- interesting because, uh, it's got the, the large detention basin on it. So this portion of it, it's not going to be developed. What we're talking about now is a lot line revision down in this area, which would make this even narrower. This lot is, this lot's connected to a rear lot back here, but this lot's essentially all wetlands, so...
So the potential for any future development in that area is slim?
It's not...
This lot, this lot isn't, this, this, I don't know, this is not cheap to develop, but...
That, that lot is not gonna be the easiest lot in the world. The, the next lot to get developed here is this lot and then probably a lot back here. But there, there's not a likelihood that this, all of this vegetation right here on the corner that really obscures view from Main Street is not gonna be taken out.
I think if you were able to do something with those six containers, that would alleviate a lot of my concern as far as seeing them from the street. I think the ones to the south of that are, are pretty much screened from most views right now. Will, Scott, anything?
I'm just regaining the fact that, that, yeah, the, what you see today is not, is, is less than half the year, really. I would say from, to be fair, seventy-five percent of that building is visible in the rear door. You know, I, I do think the height of the containers is really what adds to the whole complexity of this because, you know, it's one thing if they're on the ground level at ten feet. They're still below the lights, they're still below the buildings, below the windows. Um, when they start getting up to the twenty feet, you're competing with the building, you know? So it's that kind of visual...
But I, I do believe the ones that are on the south half of the part of the lot are going to be more screened.
They are more screened.
What are, what are the options at this point for the commission, uh, or for the applicant?
Well, for the applicant, unless, um, you wanna go back to your client, um, or can make this, um, decisions for them, that's, you know, for him to decide. Um, you should ask that question first, what they wanna do if he's done, um, and then you have to decide. I have to look at timing. I mean, if you have more questions that can't be answered, you could direct that as well.
I think the biggest question that the commission has is what, if anything, is your client, the applicant, willing to do to alleviate some of our concerns about seeing these containers?
Um, I, I, we've ta- we have talked about it at length and examined it from every partic- every angle that we could. At this point in time, our application is, as it's shown, um, and as it has been presented, um, a- at this point in time, um... My suggestion would be that if we have time, um, understanding what your concerns are, I would like to have the opportunity to go back and revisit the potential for a lot line revision, which Will says can be taken, can take place in one day, which would provide an area for at least the, the six containers that are the biggest concern. And we might be able to do that and have the plan in place, uh, before the next meeting.
Let me clear, the one day, I mean, is from the perspective of filing it. Obviously, he has to prepare the map, but there's no town involvement.
No, I understand, we have to prepare the map, that's...
And Will, if, if, if the applicant chose to do that, we would just leave this open until...
Well, we have to August twelfth under our statute timeframe, which takes us to the August third meeting. Um, and technically, you have to August twelfth to make it, to issue the decision, short of getting extensions from them.
The, um, I, I'm in, uh, California on August third.
Let me ask you another question, Will. If, if the applicant were to decide that they wanted to close this proceeding tonight?
It's not up to them, that's up to you.
If, if the decision was made to close this hearing tonight and the commission... do we have the option to approve it with conditions?
You do, um, but one little difference is, this isn't a public hearing, so it isn't like we're closing a, a milestone. You have until August twelfth to talk with the applicant and render a decision. So there's no, there's no step between those, so in a sense, you, you, you can keep talking, you can even start formulating a, a draft in some respects, um, or you could just go ahead and decide if you have enough informa-, if you need more information, you can ask from those places. If you don't, you can, you can stop.
I'm sure that they, they want to get to a point where they feel that they're done and they can move forward.
Yeah, I get that.
But they're, we're in a little bit of an impasse here and unfortunately, we can't get an answer tonight.
That's good. So.
I don't, I don't know if it matters at all, but just for the record, the, we have a pre-construction schedule on the initial approval.
On their, their, the approval that's currently standing?
Yep, we have a, one scheduled for the beginning of the week.
Just a little um background there, one of the requirements the tenant leveled was that a building permit be in hand before they'd sign a lease. And so the decision was made to move forward to get a building permit for the interior improvements. One of the other tricky things here is that the interior improvements that were approved under the um current approval um are being varied to some degree. There's a robot room, NBC came in and, and said, we wanna make these other minor interior changes. They're included in this current application. There's a server room, a robot room, a break room, and they're wanting to redo the bathrooms. And that's part of this application, but we're going forward um with a pre-construction meeting so that we can pull building permit, so that we can have a building permit, so that hopefully the lease arrangement will be able to be made. I don't know if tonight's, um, you know, the outcome of tonight's meeting's gonna have any impact on that or not.
Well, just, just playing devil's advocate here, so if you proceed along that route and you have your pre-construction meeting and you get your building permit based on your current approval, and if this current application is not approved, where does that put you with NBC Sports?
That's a good question because um, you know, NBC Sports is excited about coming to Monroe, they're looking forward to working in a cooperative manner with the town, um, but I don't know what kind of signal they'll, they'll think that it, you know, having difficulty going through the planning and zoning process for something that they feel is fairly mundane will have on the whole negotiation process. That's just, that's just a good question.
I don't think that, we have a set of regulations and this commission's responsibility to the people who elected us is to make sure that every application meets the requirements of our regulations. That's what we're doing.
And all we can do is.
You know, we're not trying to be difficult, we're just trying to do our job.
All we can do is submit that, in our opinion, based on our understanding and reading of the regulations, we feel that the application that we presented addresses the landscaping issue, which is really what it's coming down to. It's the landscaping issue. And the landscaping issue says that within a reasonable amount of time, the goal of obscuring the view should be accomplished. And based on our landscaping plan, which we'd be happy to enhance, we feel strongly that within a reasonable amount of time, those containers are going to be obscured from view. That, that's our position.
Right, but we're only talking six containers.
Right.
Like I said, and when you first came in the first application and like you said, that you wanted to see, but your intent always was to put them up front from what you said in the meeting tonight.
NBC's intent was always to ask to have them put up front.
But what you've brought forward to us and we agreed on was to have them screened behind the building. And I can understand your point about they want more room in the back, but as far as us as a commission, I think we're going out of our way to allow them up front and we're asking you to remove six of them. We're not asking you to remove twelve of them, we're asking you to remove six. And six in place of somewhere else on the property so that we can accommodate the screening that we, we want.
Can you enhance the screening any way?
Yes.
That would satisfy the commission tonight?
I don't know.
What's your proposal?
There are.
Instead of the ten to twelve foot properties, are there taller properties to start with?
I don't know what is commercially available.
Mr. Bershur said that was the tallest.
The tallest that my landscape architect indicated that was readily commercially available were ten to twelve feet. We could.
Do you know taller?
No.
Couldn't we condition that, that the lot line revision gets accepted? I realize if it doesn't, then, then they have to score one.
And to do that.
Is there a time limit for the lot line revision to get filed?
Well, lot line revision would have to happen and they have to revise the plan.
I, I, I would be more inclined i- if we're going to go with a conditional approval. And again, this depends on what those who are deliberating on it feel, but if, if we were to grant a conditional approval, that those six containers had to be relocated.
Right, with a lot line revision would, would address that.
Lot line revision behind the building.
Whatever it may be.
Whatever it may be.
Yeah, that's, that's.
This way we can, we can.
Will, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you could really condition it upon a lot line revision specifically unless you clearly had authorization to allow that, and I don't think you do, cause
No, I, I.
Three parties you gotta deal with, so.
I think that the, a condition that six, those six containers be relocated, um.
In a compliant manner.
Yeah, in a, yeah, in a, in a manner that is, isn't more visible to the.
It doesn't mean sticking.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna put them out on corporate drive.
What's that?
We're not gonna put them out on corporate drive.
No, I know, I understand, and if saying that, if you can get somewhere to put those six containers, I think that we'll feel a little bit more comfortable.
And um, I mean, if that's a condition, if that would be the condition of approval, then that would be something that we'd have to deal with in whatever way we could.
But do you think that that, that your client would be agreeable to that? It doesn't.
I, I, that's not, that's.
A conditional approval from this commission that, that your client won't agree to is worthless.
Yeah, my personal opinion is that that is the best way of resolving the issue because I'm, I'm hearing you, I understand what the issue are, is, there are enough members of the commission that are concerned about it, that I wouldn't wanna, yeah, you know, call the question. And a condition that we relocate six containers um on the site um would be something that I think we'd be able to accomplish.
That's what I want.
Does anybody else have any questions or?
No.
Anything?
So do you want to draft?
I mean, you're gonna be deliberating separately on this, what's up?
Well, they don't also need to, this is a safe one, it's all one action, so. I mean, if you're done getting information, you then would go into a deliberation in that regard, but.
Well, my, my only issue is um, when you do something like that, you're, and now, if you wanna do it, that's fine with me, but um you're gonna have to put some of it in, in our hands, uh, because like for instance, I would look at it to make sure that there's enough room for the trucks to maneuver and for those around, so it's conceivable that they may wanna put a container somewhere and we say, no, you can't do that, cause there's not enough room.
I would go back to the commission.
Then they can always come back here.
They can, yeah, well, that's my.
I think your condition should be that you're gonna approve whatever that is.
The final.
I mean, it's not gonna be drawn out, it's just they do the final plan and you give it five minute okay or five minutes not okay.
Does that have to be done during a, a meeting?
It has to be during a meeting.
Has to be during a meeting.
Yeah, it's the only time you can do it.
Could be at our next meeting.
So what do you mean?
Well, again, when we, when are we gonna have the approval written and with that condition? Are we doing that tonight or are we doing that?
You know, if, if you wanna, if you wanna move forward, what about the option of just eliminating six containers and coming back later as a phase two? I mean, it gets them in there and, I mean, the, the risk is relatively low, especially when you, you know you got the room if you do the lot line reconfiguration.
That's, that isn't, that's also an option, but the, the situation is that um NBC Sports owns eighty-six containers.
Can they stick six of them in the building until this gets resolved?
Though, that's an option, there's also.
If they resolve, is moving them somewhere else, that, that doesn't sound really like a viable option, cause resolving, so either way, the condition is to find a new home for it.
There's been some discussion about other properties that my client owns. They were talking, you know, this, in all candor, they were talking about um needing to get, every three years, the containers have to be recertified. And they were talking, at, at, at least informally about, and it's happened someplace up near Hartford, they were talking about temporarily putting some containers on this property just in transit. And um my clients were favor-, they, they didn't have approvals from you, so they didn't feel like they could do that, but they were talking about other properties that they own, for, at least for temporary storage, for, for a limited number of containers, so that's, that's a possibility.
Well, I'm sure ultimately, they're going to want all the containers on this site.
And this is, this is where they have to store the material that's in the containers. This would be a very short-term option.
So if, if we can, if we can get something back from you, we can deliberate on it tonight and if the commission is of the opinion that relocating those six is going to be a condition of approval and we move forward under that premise, if you can get a plan back to staff, we can review it and vote on it on our next meeting. You wouldn't necessarily have to be here.
I'm not going to be.
Or, or someone to represent.
Right, right.
But Bill, couldn't we even put the six behind the building for now? It would make no difference, we already approved that at one time.
Get them on losing parts, but.
I mean, not that we're losing.
He hasn't, he has to talk to his client.
Well, you're thinking. Well, these are your options. You can send them back and say you wanna know an answer about that, or you can render, deliberate and render a decision that's conditional on that. Those really are your, your two options.
Well, you were saying that you wanted whatever they were proposing to come back to the commission.
No, I'm saying what, what, you could make the condition, lose six of those, tell us back ones, find another compliant place and show us a plan that does it, that's the condition. So they're coming back after the approval, showing you just that specific issue, how they achieved that condition, rather than it being left to Scott or me to say yay or nay that that met what you wanted it to do.
Right.
I'm not talking about it being drawn out, I'm talking about just focused on that condition. And that would still be the condition, the approval's issued. And you've done that on other things before, you know? You did that on one of the writing academies where they had to do a landscape screen buffer and hey, that was the condition of approval they gave back. You did with Walmart, they had to come back with the signage after the, you know, approval three years old.
Okay.
And in, in that meantime, you can go back to the client, if they're okay with it, you can work it out. If they're not, you can come back and tell you that and then they'll have to decide what they wanna do with that approval. They either use the old one or they could fight the new one.
Mr. Sonnerson, what to, what, what's your pleasure?
The, um, the tenant is, is definitely not interested in the current approved plan, so if in fact um the, the current plan is not approved, um, we're sort of not in a good place. I think that, that a, a condition that we do something with six of the containers, which would, could be brought, they could, giving them the option of only um bringing eighty containers to the site would be one way of addressing that issue. Or finding a place on the site that the six containers could go would be another option that would, I think, be viable, but forging forward and having this application potentially fail is not as attractive an alternative to me.
No, and that's, that's not our goal.
Is going in that direction.
When you say six containers, you mean um?
One row.
Six double containers.
No.
No.
Just six.
The six top ones.
Six containers, it's the, the ones that go from ten to twenty feet.
So um. Found a place for them here, where's the um?
So close to twenty feet to ten feet in that location.
Why can't you take?
Cause it's in the.
We're three, we're taking the six that are farther north.
Oh, you can't put them right here?
No, because you can see, here, let me take, let me take over the mouse. This is the building line.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay.
So, so you can see that this.
So that's why you need to move.
Yeah, that container's almost right on the building line. We could probably put one more here.
So you could put two more there? Double stack.
Won't be able to get by, but.
We had two more, two there.
Now, you see, they're, they're keeping the catch basin open, you got a light pole there, and it, there's not a lot of.
Right, we, I.
Room there.
We, we can see.
Why are you keeping the catch basin open?
Well, we could cover the catch basin as a practical matter, but we felt like it was a better idea to keep it open. If we covered the catch, I mean, they're gonna be elevated and the rainwater's gonna flow underneath them, we could put a container over top of the catch basin.
You could put two there.
Well, you got two spots there that we could, well.
So now you're up to four.
Well, we can't maintain it, you can't clean out the catch basin.
Let's zoom out a little bit more.
You can, you can shift them around, you could probably even move the lights, cause they're gonna do absolutely nothing.
Would it be impossible to turn the containers?
Damn it.
Here, let me help you here.
Just to extend, I wanted to look at this area.
There's another gap there.
So we've got, let's, let's look at it this way, we've got at least two we could put here, if we cover the catch basin area.
Make it, make it bigger, so. Right now, hold it, before you do it, okay, now, now you can.
Okay, um, we could put two here, two at the far end.
What's that gap, right there?
And we could, I, we could put two more here.
Well, we're trying to get past that light pole.
Yeah, we can, we can.
You can put one there.
With that, no, yeah.
Well, it'll be two.
The light poles.
Put one there and put one on top of the catch basin and you're done.
We have the, we can, we have our six, two, four, six.
No, five, and then move up, put one there.
Just one single.
Single, single?
No, one. We see the light pole that's right there, we, we want, we want the single, we want the single stack from that light pole this way. So you can put one where the hand is.
Yeah.
Then move up, further up the line, no, the other way. Keep on, keep on, one right there.
Okay, put one single there.
Right.
That's your six.
That's one, two, three, four, five, six.
That work? That work?
That works.
If you agree to that, we can just, can just.
I, I, I agree to those revisions.
That works.
Any other questions?
You have to open to public.
No.
No?
No, it's not public hearing, site one.
Anything else? We have to formally close this floor?
No, you just, you just acknowledge that you don't need any more information from the applicant and I'll move to deliberations.
I think we have enough information now. And we will move forward to deliberation later on in the meeting. Mr. Sonnerson, anything else from you?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. A five-minute break, it's nine thirty-three, five minutes, please.
Get back first because I don't want to hear about it.
That's right.
We're good?
Yep.
Nine forty, we're back in session. Mixed up, extensions none, bond releases and reductions, SEP two thousand fifteen dash oh two, file number one five five two A, CVS five eleven Monroe Street, full surety bond released sixty-five thousand dollars.
Are we seating somebody? Are we going to seat somebody?
Um, one, two, three, yeah, we have to seat somebody.
Be Jonathan.
Jonathan, you're seated. TBS is requesting a release of the bond, we have a bond release report from the town engineer saying that the bond inspection has been completed, the work sheet's been completed, as-built has been submitted, and all work required is completed in compliance with the approval. Should I entertain a motion?
Move to, uh, move to release the bond, sixty-five thousand dollars of SEP two thousand fifteen dash oh two, file number one five five two A.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Paul Ross?
Paul McKellar, yes.
Yabrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
ACs, yes.
Arali, yes.
No modifications, meeting minutes, July sixth, two thousand sixteen. Should I entertain a motion?
Move to accept the minutes of July sixth, two thousand seventeen. I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any comments? Paul Ross?
Paul McKellar, yes.
Yabrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
ACs, yes.
Arali, yes.
Application deliberations determinations, we have approval letter for seventy-one eighty-seven and four thirty-one Web Circle, special exception permit, SEP two thousand seventeen dash oh one, file one five eight four A, for the Web Mountain Park Extension Pavilion and Parking. This is an improvement of an existing facility associated with preservation of the land, provide safe, safe, safe sightlines on Web Circle, parking area will be better defined, there'll be a new pavilion. These are all improvements that are permitted pursuant to a special exception permit. Some improvements in the existing disturbed areas. Some existing vegetation will be removed, some buffer plantings will be installed, and reconstruction of removed stone walls are proposed. Existing use remains unchanged and it's aligned with the underlying zone. And it will retroactively formalize the parking area to provide dimensionally correct bays and handicap parking. We have a motion.
For this one, John, you would not be seated because Dave will be recorded as absent.
Okay. Motion, anyone?
Move to accept, correction, I move to approve SEP two thousand seventeen dash oh one, file number one five eight four A, Web Mountain Park Extension.
Second.
Any further discussion? Paul Ross, starting on Leon?
Yabrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
ACs, yes.
Arali, yes.
Okay, let's move on to ZCA, two thousand seventeen oh two, file one zero one one D. Oh, no, we don't want to, we don't want to, do we want to deliberate on that one?
Which one?
This is our.
Yeah, you, you, it's yours, you tell me what you want to do.
The zone change. To clarify it for anyone who doesn't fully understand or has any questions, we've granted a zone change to the parcel on the corner of one eleven and thirty-four. Complying with the terms of our P O C D, it was expanding the business use in what's generally a business owner. Little piece of roadway that went through, the applicant could not request a zone change because he did not own that piece of property. The town, however, can change zones on road right-of-ways. So this is an application that we put forward to change the zone on the road right-of-way just to make the B two zone continuous along Route one eleven.
Yeah, it's in terms of, you know, what, as a town road, then?
No, it's not determined who owns the road, there is a right-of-way there, but if there's no clear understanding of who owns the road, the old road.
There's no clear understanding.
Believe me, we've been through this to the last drummers.
Yeah, we did.
We've gone, they've gone to the state, they've gone through title searches, no one knows or claims to own that road.
Well, isn't that going to create a problem for the life of the, maintaining it?
That is not a concern.
Yeah.
We're just looking, we're just looking to change the zone.
No, I understand that, but this, this concerns anyway, regardless of what we're doing. It seems like, I mean, I don't want to open a, you know, can of worms, but.
The problem is, we have, we have a B two zone, we have a B two zone, and we got a fifty or sixty-foot strip of R three going right between that hole, the Stevenson lumber, railroad tracks, all the way down to thirty-four, it's all B two.
No, I get all that.
Except for that little sixty, fifty or sixty-foot piece, so we want to make that zone continuous.
Paul, what is your concern? Maybe I could put it to that.
Well, it sounds like there's some, there's another issue that's not being addressed. I realize it has nothing to do.
But what is the issue?
That, that, who's responsible to maintain that?
That's irrelevant to what zone it is.
I, I, I understand, I've just.
That's, that's not, that's not our, our furby.
I mean, the abutting property owners have not, the abutting property owners have been the abutting property owners for years, for decades, and they haven't raised the issue to the town, that the towns have maintained the road.
They still can if they want.
Yeah, they still can, but, so the people who are abutting it.
So what is the concern of this, of the?
Well, we have two neighbors who don't get along and if you look back at the violations, there is encroachment by Mondo onto Wiley and it's a mess and there's a lot of stuff going on, and Mondo's using the property without permits and all that.
So.
Those are the issues that they're going on between the neighbors.
Right.
Which really is irrelevant related to the zoning of this fifty-foot strip of land.
Right, so why, why do they care about it?
Because they're mad, they're mad at their neighbor.
They're mad at us because they feel like we're helping Mondo by allowing him access to that property and by rezoning that property. And we are helping him, but we're helping him to get into compliance so he can get that jump off the other property.
That's the whole, yeah.
And in the end, they'll, they should all be happy.
At the end, that's our job, isn't it? They take a while.
This whole, this whole process is trying to bring properties into compliance with our P O C D.
That's fine, I get, I get.
I think the bigger issue would have been, had you not, well, you wouldn't be doing this, you did this on the other property, but, but the other property's staying residential, the road should stay residential, but you zoned that other piece, which is a bigger piece. And you would have, if, if he could have, if he could have shown that that clearly was a town road, that was part of his application, and you probably would have zoned it then as well.
Yeah, if, if, if there was a clear understanding that the town owned that, like Will just said, it would have been included. Any other questions? Who, we heard this tonight, so Jonathan's seated? All right, we have a motion?
Move to approve ZCA two thousand seventeen dash oh two, file number one zero one one D, Zone Boundary Change Petition Application.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Paul McKellar, yes.
Yabrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
ACs, yes.
Arali, yes.
Okay. That brings us to Thirty-Five Corporate Drive. Now Jonathan is still seated for this?
Yep.
Okay. I think that the major concern that everyone has with the visibility and the screening of the containers, I believe that the proposed changes that were discussed and agreed to by the applicant meet everyone's approval, but I would like to hear from those of you who are deliberating on this as to what your thoughts are.
Paul? I'm still with the changes that he agreed to move the containers.
I was fine with the way they were originally set up for this application, not the older one, we're only making the move, six of them, right?
Right.
Okay, that's fine with me.
So everything, like the north half of the road, they do one line?
Okay, I'm good with it.
Fine.
Any other issues or?
I didn't have any other issues with just those containers.
Will, Scott, anything that?
Uh, I'm, I put, for the record, I put in the same comment about the entrance drive, I mean, it's my role.
All right, then let's, let's bring that up right now, Scott was of the opinion that the entry driveway needed to be a little bit wider in order to get the proper truck turning radius, the applicant does not feel that that's necessarily the case, testified that trucks had been in and out of the lot for years, that the configuration is currently set up, there's not going to be a lot of truck traffic other than their own trucks coming in and out, so the applicant did not feel that there was any modification needed to the driveway.
Yeah, it's an existing condition, there's not, there's not any changes being made to the site, there's not any other physical changes, they're not adding parking, they're not changing curb lines.
No, they actually. They're what?
They're changing the parking. They're not changing the front entrance driveway, but there are modifications within the parking lot.
With it, but not, not.
Yeah, not the.
Structural changes, just?
Not structural, they're moving the third line out to make full-size spaces and.
I'm fine with the entrance as is.
Scott, I appreciate your input, but.
Well, I'm just saying, it's my role, I just.
That's okay.
I understand that.
It's all right.
We're going to let that slide.
And the other item that I just wanted to explain, and I think I'm going to explain this more for the future, but I want to get you guys in the habit of, or in knowing that I'm talking, you're going to hear me talking more about green areas and reducing pavement when we can, because the new MS four program requires that. And one of the things that they also require, because we have to meet a quota of a reduction of the previous area, and one of the, the things that they're allowing us to do is to do what they're calling a look back, and that is a five-year program where we can go back and, and use some of the approvals that we've done as items that we can use to meet our quota. So when we let ones like this go by, we're letting some of our quota go by, but I just thought I'd explain it so that maybe in the future, we take a little bit closer look at that.
When does that go into effect?
It's, it's already in effect.
I don't understand about it, is though, with modification of a site, I can see how you can do net changes and net reductions, how do you do that with a brand-new site?
No, with a brand-new site, what's required is that it have stormwater quality and stormwater quantity control, which is typically what we do.
Also, instead of adding, if you add stormwater quality to a modified site, can we?
Yeah, yeah.
Do a different one?
Yeah, yeah, so you can either add stormwater quantity or, or you reduce impervious. This would have been a good one because they did switch around parking and get rid of parking, they could have put a couple islands in, it's okay, though, it's not a big number, I just want to get you guys in the habit of thinking that, that's where I'm coming from on some of this stuff, it's not just stuff I'm throwing out there.
Decrease impervious surface.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be something that kind of evolves a little bit more as we go along.
All right, we'll continue to remind us.
They always come up in other towns.
There were two other issues that you went on to find, one, oh, one is, if you recall, the last meeting we had, the applicant provided some sketch drawings of improvements to some of the landscaping, and my comment was that gets incorporated into the drawings, I'm assuming that would be a condition. The other is, you had discussed the initial plant size, whether you wanted to do anything and make them all uniform or leave it as they were proposed and looked at.
I just took a quick look through the, the drawing again this evening, and the, the cluster of three or four all the way to the south end are the six to eight foot, but all of the others are either eight to ten or ten to twelve, so they all are more sizable trees, so I, I'm playing with it the way it is.
But that's only my opinion.
I'm good with it the way it is, but how do you?
So the smaller trees are towards?
All the way to the south.
South side.
That's mine.
Okay.
Okay.
And last comment is that it includes the thirteen thousand dollar bond.
Was that a bond that you calculated?
It's a bond that they gave me, they gave me the, their bond recommendation, which was for twenty-five thousand, my bond recommendation is for thirteen.
Do you think that was the one you got?
And what we can do is if the bond's posted for the previous approval, we'll just get it so that they change the numbers on it so it would be applicable to this one as well.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so you, you have noted the, the changes in the, in the locations of the containers, the six containers. All right, if that's, if no one else has any other comments, take a motion.
So we're going to move forward with the draft or before we vote, or are we going to vote?
What do you think, Will?
As always, I recommend that you get it in writing, but that's up to you. Because it's clearer than what you're voting on, it's not me interpreting it later.
Okay, so then, what is the general consensus of the, of the commission, to go forward with an approval or denial?
No, approval.
Approval. All right, so Will will draft an approval letter that we will review and vote on at our next meeting. Mr. Sonnerson, just so, so you know, that, that's just a procedure that we follow so that we, we have the actual approval letter before us, so we are all sure that we're voting on what we intend.
We did that last.
That, that's not unusual, just if I could ask a quick question, would you like us to revise the plan before the approval is drafted and voted on or?
I mean, you heard what they were asking, so you can start that, but.
I can't officially submit it until after they vote.
Well, you can, but I mean, it's fine, but I'm just saying, you can get ahead of the game at least, but. I mean, I, I can't say it's fine until they vote on it.
I understand, I understand. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else we should be deliberating on? That's it? Okay. Regulation review amendment work session. We don't have anything scheduled, we'll talk about that some other time.
Okay.
No correspondence, I have nothing to report. Anybody else have anything to report? Scott, the captain?
I just have a question. Actually, this question is directed to Scott. I've been keeping Joe informed about all the violations that I see. I feel like I'm the only one in the world that sees these, but I guess I am. Um, anyway, a few months ago you had said that you were gonna work with him about maybe coming up, I'm thinking of which. You know, maybe a better procedure so that we can follow up, so we know what's going on. I mean, the lights that are still blinking, the banners that are still waving, all the things that are, you know, the infractions, the violations. Um, and you were going to see about maybe coming up with some other kind of procedure to help mitigate some of this. Have you made any progress?
No, I'll be honest with you. What, what is the consensus of the commission? What, what would the commission be looking for in some of that? Because I, I kinda, I need.
I, I know he's got, you know, bigger fish to fry, but on the other hand.
No, what I'm asking is that, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, but, but you're a commissioner. I need to know what everyone else is thinking, what they, what they're, what they'd like to see, um, before I get Joe too involved in creating new forms, new reviews, um, procedures, that kind of thing, so.
Kathy, what exactly are you looking for?
I am looking for the people who are in violation to be notified that they are in violation, so that they will turn, unplug the lights that are flashing and changing color that we say that they're not allowed to have. Or the banners that are flying that say, you know, ice cream here, or whatever they say, or the Sammer signs. They should know that they're in violation, because all it does is it breeds the neighbor next door across the street. Say, I, I can put up that same thing. So there are three, um, of these flashing signs where Sal's Pizza is, between the Subway and the Tanning Place and the, I forgot the third one. And then across the street is Honey Spot Pizza. They all have these beautiful lights that we don't allow, and so I just.
And so you talked to Joe about that?
Yes, he, he's aware of it. And so my concern is that we just allow it to slide, it's like this road that just kinda slid into, oh, we don't know who owns it, you know, who's responsible. And so we have violations.
So do you want to send a letter to those three businesses?
I would like, well, I, I just want, I wanna know what the process is.
He's doing something about it.
So it's just not happening, happening quick enough?
It's not happening at all, and so what happens is, somebody else moves in and says, ah, I see those lights.
Kathy, I don't think, I don't think it's fair for you to say it's not happening at all, because you don't know that for a fact.
He's got bigger fish to fry.
No, 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 no.
Well, I mean, there's.
There's a process that has to be followed. Joe just can't go out there, knock on the door, and say, you gotta unplug that. He's gotta send him a letter of violation. He's gotta send him a letter requesting voluntary compliance with the zoning regulations. Then, you know, he's gotta send him another letter. And all this stuff just takes weeks.
I, I realize it, I realize it, but some of these violations have been on for, for a year, for, for a very, very, very long time. And we do get, you know, in this little red folder, we see what he's writing and who he's writing to. We see that. We don't see the ones that he either is writing to that he doesn't send us. If he's, if he's following up on them, fine, I don't know that. But all I'm saying is that, you know, there are rules. It doesn't matter what the rules are. Either we have the rules and we follow them, or we, or we just scrap the rules and say.
I'll, I'll ask Joe to, to make, I don't know if we're getting every letter that he sent out regarding violations. I'll ask him to start putting more copies in the, in the binder, so that you can see what he's sending out.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, we could get him to make a copy and put them in a bu, in a binder and.
Or just a list, yeah.
And he'll have them. Man, I don't think I wanna start having him.
We used to have a spreadsheet, but we decided that we, we really didn't want that to be published to public information.
Was it public?
We used, anything that we get is public information.
Can we look at it as a different way? Thinking about Joe for a second. I think the commission needs to have a conversation at some point in a work session and talk about what it does want to see and what are priority issues to go after, because there's so much out there. So, you know, what is the direction of the commission? You don't, can't do it today, but at some point I think you should have a, some, some discussion about compliance and what, what are the really important things? I'm not saying that he shouldn't do unimportant things, but, but, you know, there's so much to be done.
There is a lot.
So he has to pick and choose what he does, but he's doing it himself to some degree. So having some, if the commission periodically is having these issues, I think you need to kinda come to grips for yourself as to what are the important things, what you need to go after, what, what is not worth going after in a sense of, okay, that's low food, if you get around to it, get around to it.
And, and there's a story behind every one of these, you know, they're, they're a little different because of the situation or whatever, and, you know, that's at least what I find when you quiz on it and you find out, oh, that's the reason, you know, and then there's this, and then there's that, you know, it's.
I understand that these business, all the businesses in town would like to have more business, and they use the signs, they use the lights, they use the banners as a way to draw business. I understand, that's their promotional, um.
And some of those signs, there, there are allowances in the regulations for having those signs on a temporary basis. And, and so, you know, there's that arrangement. I've talked to him about, you know, how often do you go out? He picks every, uh, uh, so, you know, I think it's like once a month or so, he goes out and actually pulls signs, throws them in the back of the truck, that kind of thing. There's a, I.
Those aren't the ones that Kathy's talking about.
Okay, if you, you know, the only thing I could say is, if, what Will's saying's a good idea, and I think we had talked about that, um, as well, Bill, about talking about some of the enforcement for some of the, um.
Or we revise the regulations and say, we like banners and we like signs that blink.
Well, that's a different discussion, yeah.
But, but that's one way for everybody being compliant.
We just did a sign regulations, we've done a sign regulations.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, I'm gonna talk to Joe, and I'm gonna ask him to put copies, I'm assuming he knows the ones that you've talked to him recently on, and we'll get him to put copies of those in a folder for you for next meeting.
He what?
He's doing it, but isn't he?
No, I don't, I don't think that Joe only sent one letter out in the last two weeks. They will.
We'll make, we'll get that done.
If Joe only sent one letter out in the last two weeks, then there's a deficiency.
Well, I know to some degree, some of the things that you're talking about don't get letters, they do get phone calls.
And, and that's fine.
And then they get forgotten, and then they get another phone call, you know, like the truck outside the woods door or whatever it is.
But they closed.
They did?
They closed.
That's what got rid of the truck?
The truck's still there, the business closed.
What business is that?
That flooring place on the corner of Purdy Hill.
Oh, well, they closed up?
The, the, the install is vacant.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't notice that.
But the truck's still there.
All right.
Also, some of our phone calls, some of them get to the level of a letter and, you know.
A phone call is fine, as long as, you know, somebody says, oh, he really needs, oh.
I will talk to Joe specifically about your requests.
Thank you very much.
And get a response from him for the next meeting.
And that's it. My, my concern more is that we haven't determined what we think the rules should be. And if the rules are, you know.
Well, it's, it's not, you have regulations.
These are the rules.
Those are the rules.
You have regulations, and it's up to your zoning enforcement office to.
He works thirty-five hours a week, and he's probably got fifty hours a week worth of work to do.
Yep.
And he's got the rules, and he, he knows what he wants.
And he knows the rules. I'm not saying he doesn't know the rules. I, I know he knows the rules.
I'll, I'll talk to him.
But it's creep, you know.
Well, again, that's my point, of you guys talking to yourselves and figuring out what are your priority issues, because if, if, you know, landmining isn't as important as all those signs, then you'll go focus on the sign.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
Well, maybe he's gotta hit a few, you know, hit a few signs, a few.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I had suggested to Joe over times is that, and it's hard, because he is one person, but, you know, if he had an assistant or something, you know, I suggest that he does a, he has a series of programs, and he'll do them annually, so like, you know, August is sign month or something every year, and he goes and he just attacks signs for, you know, a couple weeks in August, and maybe he does that twice a year. But, you know, being one person, it's, you know, it's hard keeping up with just the daily, because he's not just doing it personally, he's also issuing permits, so I mean, and that's pretty priority too, so.
Yes, and I think permits are very important. Without them, it's gonna get done.
Having, having done enforce, doing enforcement myself with wetlands, I know how difficult it is that people, there's a go-around for everything. It's really frustrating, but I will talk to him specifically about it.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Ten, ten?